Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of North Plains. This is our regular session, City Council Minutes, a meeting Tuesday, September 5th, 2023, at 7:06. Thank you very much for your patience while we get settled. At this time, I'd like to have everyone stand for the president. All right, Lori, roll call, please. Thank you. Councilor Faith, your Councilor Kendall.
Here.
Councilor Martinez here, Councilor Payton.
Present.
Here. And bigger than that, here. Thank you. Item number five on our agenda is the consent agenda. Tonight, we're approving the September 5th, 2023, City Council's regular session agenda, and we're also approving the August 21st, 2023, City Council minutes. At this time, are there corrections or additions to the minutes that we need to be aware of? Hearing none, I'll call for motion. I'll move into the consent agenda in a second. All right, we have a first by Councilor Martinez, seconded by Councilor Payton, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Item six on our agenda is the public comment. This is the time that we wish and invite anyone wanting to step up and speak about something that is not on our agenda. Lori, do you have any knowledge, either online via email, or folks wanting to speak for public comment without receiving anything?
That works. It may be better when we get home, I don't know.
Could you sit down? Please, if you're with us on the Zoom call, please. All right, let the record show that no one in the just made has come forward for the public comment. So tonight, we have two public hearings. The first one will be on ordinance number 489, and the second one is on ordinance number 490. We have a lot of folks who are here to speak on both of those items. And to get us started, I'll go ahead and turn this over to Lori for first grant. Thank you. The North Plains City Council will conduct a legislative public hearing on City File CPA 23-056 (2), Housing Needs Analysis Update. The order of business will be as follows. The mayor will open the public hearing and ask if any of the councilors need to declare conflict of interest. The mayor will request the staff report. The councilors may ask questions at any time during the public hearing. Any written correspondence submitted on behalf of this item will be included in the record. The applicant will be invited to present oral testimony per the public will be invited to provide oral or written testimony on proposed amendment, first by proponents, then opponents, and finally those that are new sources. Additional staff comments will then be presented. The mayor will then close the public hearing or continue the hearing to engage certain if the mayor closes the public hearing, the mayor will call for council comments and discussion. Unless the hearing is continued, the council may reach a final decision tonight. If the hearing is continued, the town will make the final decision after continued hearing. In the case, I notice that the final decision mails our all party that have been proceeding. Everyone who testifies and came to be a party in proceeding and thus provide their name and full mailing address. State law and city municipal code provide certain criteria that apply to the council's decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to both criteria and findings of fact or to other city or state land use standards that the person testified in the proposed land use action. Thank you, Lori. Before I open up the public hearing, I also wanted to let folks that are on this for the public hearing, for both public hearings, if you wish to testify during the public hearing, I, all I ask you to do is raise your hand, and we will call on you when the time comes. The chat feature on Zoom is not part of the public hearing. I'm sure that, you know, I know that, you know, you might have comments or questions, but we are asking you that if you do want to participate in the public hearing, you do need to raise your hand and wait to be called on so that we can have your testimony into the record. So at this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at 7:11. And then turn this over to Andy. For the staff, oh, excuse me, are there any councilors that need to declare any conflict votes? Okay, hearing none, then I'll go ahead and turn this over to Andy for the staff report.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the comment about the chat. I'm trying to run the computer and the presentation and get folks' questions all at the same time and do a timer later, so that helps if folks just speak when the time comes at that time. However, if you can't hear us at any time or have an issue, a technical issue, please do let us know in the chat, and that is, we'll definitely respond to that. So, thank you, Madam Mayor. The first hearing is going to be about ordinance 489, the housing needs analysis, and Heather Austin from 3J Consulting is going to walk us through a bit of a presentation on that.
Thank you, Andy, and Mayor Lenihan, it's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. And Andy is just showing up a few slides on the housing needs analysis. This is PPA File 23-056 Sub 2. Sub 1 is the UGB here, and it will have later this evening. Both are thought to be hand in hand, I suppose, complementary proposals because the housing needs analysis does feed into the urban growth boundary expansion, but we'd like to take the housing needs analysis first because it is the necessary housing basis for the UGB. We'll get more as that. The other thing I'd like to mention is that this is the second time we've had a chance to do this presentation for you, so we've added a little more information to sort of clarify what's in the report and where the information comes from, but there is nothing new in the housing needs analysis from the last time you had a public hearing on this. We are coming back because of some public noticing issues, so we want to make sure that that's clear, that we did not make any changes to the document that was in your packet this evening. With that, we can move forward on slide show. So this 2022 Housing Needs Analysis is an update to the 2017 Housing Needs Analysis that this council approved. The reason that we are only six years into the process and have to update a 20-year document is because to be able to use the HNA as our basis for residential landing for the urban growth boundary, we are required by state law to use the most updated Portland State University population forecast and population estimates. And for Washington County, that occurred on June 2020. So there was a change in the way population is estimated for all cities and incorporated county areas in Washington County, and therefore, we had to update our numbers in our housing needs analysis to reflect that change. The underlying analysis and methodology is used to determine how much land need we may need moving forward and how much buildable land was within the city remain the same largely. Let's next slide, please. The document, I think, that is the same that it was the last time you held this public hearing earlier this year, maybe in June. The 2017 HNA is different from the 2022 update in that it previously included some buildable land available in both Sunset Ridge and Bryn Hill. As we all know, Ridge is fully built out, and Bryn Hill is fully improved and about half-built out, or maybe more now, it's been a while since I checked on that. So we are not able to count on any residential land built out to move forward in those areas, which leaves the cities buildable land that are in the current urban growth boundary, and the city limits very limited. Next slide, please. So in order to look at the HNA and use it as our basis of factual housing need for the UGB, we have to make sure that it spans for a wide variety of housing types for citizens of the city, both current and future. We need to evaluate how to accommodate for any deficits housing. Again, the 2017 UGB did identify capacity for 558 dwelling units. Those were largely constructed or are approved for construction both in Sunset Ridge 2 and Bryn Hill. So they identified need of 1,348. Those 558 are largely accounted for with a remaining need of 790 dwelling units. This resulted in need for 167.4 acres to accommodate the residential landing need. And I'm going to explain how we get to that 167.4. So to identify how much land 790 dwelling units is going to be there's stuff to make some of that how we will develop that land. And one way we do that is think about the overall density. And in the housing analysis, you'll see there's lower density development. That'd be like your R 7.5 zoning district. There's some medium density, which would be your R 5 zoning, and some higher density, which is your R 2.5 zoning district. And of course, there's opportunities for a little bit of mixed use in your commercial zones. All of that is factored in to determine how much land we might need to be able to develop housing over the next 20 years. We also look at infrastructure such as streets, you know, the right of way, the way that we get people in and out, sidewalks. We looked at parks and schools. We found those schools identified in the 20-year horizon. We talked with both borough school district about that, and current schools in the city do have capacity to accommodate that growth. The parks accommodate, parks that we found from the the city Parks Master Plan does call for about 40 acres of that 167 acres that would be designated for parks. So what we have assumed is a housing split type of about 70% single-family detached and 30% combination, single-family attached and multi-family. This is quite a bit denser than traditional development in North Plains that is currently 88% or maybe a little less now that Bryn Hills developed some attached single-family units, but it's still in the 80s percent range to down to 70% so that we're more efficiently using our residential land in the city. And in order to pursue an urban growth boundary expansion, we do have to demonstrate that we are implementing land use efficiency measures, which this council did approve in spring of 2021. Several land use efficiency measures, including types of housing that you can build in your zones, restricting new single-family detached from your R 5 zoning district, and other ways that you can efficiently use the land that's within the city. And that will apply when you expand your urban growth boundary and put new residential lands. So those land use efficiency measures not only affect the land that's in the city and very limited, but also moves forward into your urban growth boundary expansion. Next slide, please. That, that is the explanation of what's in the packet for the housing needs analysis. There's a staff report in your packet this evening, too, that's largely similar to what was in your packet in June of that year. We did update some of the findings to make sure we were addressing some of the questions and concerns that we've been hearing throughout the process. So those are all included within your packet this evening, as is the planning commission recommendation. They did hold a public hearing last month in August and recommend approval again to the city council. So with that, staff and the planning commission recommend approval of this proposed housing needs analysis. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Hearing none. We'll go ahead and move on to invite the public up to provide oral and oral testimony on the proposed amendments. First, I don't think we have any proponents for the ordinance 489. But there is a gentleman who just arrived, and I'm not sure if you are wanting to speak on 489 or 490, can please? Hi, did you want to speak for or against ordinance 489? It's the Housing Needs Analysis Amendment.
Yes.
Okay, if you could come up to the table?
Yeah. Yeah, it would be against that.
That's fine. Are you on the HNA or the urban growth boundary?
Urban growth boundary.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Steve, is it on? Is it? Okay.
Oh, they're, they're, oh, yeah, they're, they're. Okay, so I do have three cards up here, folks wishing to speak as opponents. So I'll go ahead and call them up. First is Katie Miller. Can you come up to the table because you can give them the microphone and then just state your name for the record and your address, please?
Yeah. Right. Please. My name is Katie Miller. I have an address, which is on the line that I pulled out. First of all, I want to say that I'm not anti-housing. I am a proponent for the correct type of housing. In this case, that would include more apartment condos and multifamily properties in general, with less of a dependency on single-family homes. I'm a component of housing that takes up less space and is not discriminatory against those who do not have high incomes or who are not in a traditional dual family. Those most in need of housing are lower income, yet the proposed housing solution in North Plains are mostly single-family homes. The starting price of homes in the most recent North Plains development in Bryn Hill is 405,000, which is hardly affordable. The first property I purchased was a condo I bought myself eight years ago. At the time, I was single and I couldn't afford to buy a single-family house. Plus, it was too much space for one person, nor did I have the bandwidth to maintain a large property. I have a college degree and simply had a lower paying job. Of course, I was not a criminal, and my neighbors were not either. It was a well-functioning, quiet community, full of professionals and retirees. This is simply one example that lower-priced properties don't automatically bring big crime, big crimes, sorry. I mention this because I don't fully understand the decision to fully rely on single-family housing, and I'm a huge proponent of multi-family housing. I'm actually really well in the communities in the area. The old job listing that I saw on the North Plains community website was for an operating tenant, one. I think this was just taken, it disclosed about two days ago, but the pay range was $16.85 to $21.44 an hour. A resident would not be able to afford any of the new housing that you are planning to build this single detached housing, or maybe even be a cash. So who would be the parties? It would be Intel families. Once again, Intel is doing a multi-billion dollar expansion in Hillsborough, and will bring both other state and other country families into the area. And that's who will be buying these houses. It doesn't really solve our current housing crisis of those who are here in the theater of Oregon housing. I believe a higher emphasis on multi-unit housing needs to be incorporated into the plan. Reliance on single-family homes is not smart. It makes us a colony for Intel. It doesn't focus on the people who are currently hearing, who are in tune. Thank you.
Very much. I didn't get able to mention that we will have a five-minute demonstration. It'll be on the screen. So the next up to is Jackie Dyke Jones.
Good evening, Mayor Lenihan and City Councilors. My name is Jackie Dyke Jones. I'm a steward of the land and a fourth-generation family farmer, providing food and fiber for Oregonians and beyond. So I'm a retired classroom teacher, and today was the first day of school. So I'd like to share with you an amazing Oregon Ida McClassroom literacy project story called "Before We Eat," it puts a face on farming, letting kids know that their food didn't magically appear in the supermarket, but came to them through the work of real people. A good beginning look at where our food comes from. Quoted by Amy Codler, author of "The Locumorn Way and the Farm School Covetment." So as Katie had mentioned, I'm also not opposed to efficient and economical, affordable, environmentally sustainable housing. Without farmland, there's no ice cream burgers, blackberry pie, grass-fed playgrounds, or insert your favorite thing. Farmland is finite. What about the soils, the carbon sequestration, oxygen, food, fiber providing working lands? Metro, for example, has more than enough buildable land in its boundaries for its 20-year housing supply. The limiting factor is infrastructure. So if the bedroom community of North Plains is saying that they need additional housing land to balance the revenue, all I'm seeing is that it will be more expensive for home buyers and renters. Land outside this land, what I'm finding is that what I know is that the housing developments in North Plains were constructed by a Florida home builders. And during the House Bill 3414, I asked if they were going to at least promote like Oregon or more local builders, and they were like, nope, no guarantee at all. And everyone should be disgusted with the 30% to be affordable. That's an F grade. So I see this as a squandering of our non-renewable resources and food systems. I'm encouraging you to please reconsider the addition of the housing needs analysis.
Thank you. Next up is Nellie McAdams.
Mayor Lenihan, City Councilors, thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Excuse me, could you state your name for the record, please?
I don't need to do that.
Thank you.
I'm Nellie McAdams. My address is on the record, but I testify as a private individual in opposition to the HNA. First, it overlooks buildable and underdeveloped land. The HNA's map considers most of the land in the UGB, including large residential lots, to be fully developed. It overlooks large parcels of undeveloped land, and it claims some categories of buildable land have zero buildable lots by their proximity to the city center. The city's urban planning area agreement with Washington County does not include any of the land to the west or far southeast corner, including inclusion in UGB. It does include the low-density area and airport southwest of town, yet the HNA transit area is an exclusion area. Second, the HNA does far too little to encourage infill. The HNA recommends many ways to increase housing options that North Plains has not yet taken. This includes mixed commercial residential, which North Plains does not allow despite the fact that it was the most requested housing type in the survey for the downtown improvement home. Third, the HNA would result in unaffordable, expensive, disservice housing that wastes farmland. It repeatedly states that North Plains has a deficit of affordable and multifamily housing, stating a household earning medium family income could afford a home up to 258,000, which is below North Plains' median single-family home price of 337,000. Both are less than the starting price of homes in Bryn Hill. The HNA does very little to change the status quo and would result in 84% of total housing being single-family detached compared to 61% for Washington County. Not only is single-family detached housing unaffordable to most buyers, it's unaffordable to the city, as the HNA notes. If improving its cash flow is the city's goal, it should not sprawl a turkey to death but build inward. Or the city erroneously ties its growth to metro, despite being outside metro, plans to grow in Hillsborough. Yet Metro's 2040 plan names North Plains as part of a rural regional. The 2022 EOA counted the land here as 30% cheaper than large neighboring cities. That's because North Plains is outside metro and not intended for such urbanization. And just because the land is affordable to the developer does not mean that the housing will be affordable to the buyer of the city. Cheap land only increases developers' margins. And providing windfalls to landowners and developers does not have public interest, nor is it a gold-forty factor for UGB expansion. The city cannot at the same time certain metros' growth protocol and grow as if it were inside metro. For these reasons and more, I urge you to vote no on the HNA.
Thank you very much. And last up, I think this is, is it Ayla Heffer? I'm sorry.
That's cute, it's Ayla. Wouldn't be the first time I've called a Heffer, and you know, I'm proud to be US. So, you know, I wasn't going to talk tonight, but you know, I said same thing before, and I'll say it again.
Would you be surprised if somebody, just state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, it's Ayla Hoffler.
Thank you.
And I'm your neighbor. And my family lives in North Plains, and my kids always school here. And long ago in the dark ages, I had a job with them playing board games here. Anyway, the thing is, just because Portland State can tell us all their numbers, we don't have to do it. You know, people are allowed to say, no, not here. And I think people need to stand up for that weirdity and know what they want here. We want to stay single-family residences. We should do so. That's where you have a yard, you know, you can see the stars at night, those kinds of things. That's what we do here, besides farms. And so here's the deal, I want to have a question. If you have an old house in North Plains right now and you tear it down to replace it, are you going to tell them they have to have one of the old dwellings on that land? Is that going to be the new infill rules? You can't build, you can't replace your single-family residence?
Heather, can you, do you, can she respond to you after your test?
Yeah, because that is a burning question. And, you know, secondly, I've said this before, the reason why we don't have affordable land and affordable housing is because our government is simply content with this state. And today, Washington County just spent $1.4 million for two tax lots in Forest Grove for the homeless. Okay, well, maybe they ought to start subsidizing normal people that go to work for a living. Maybe we ought to change the whole model of where some of the money gets shifted back to the people that make, you know, an average wage, helping the blue-collar people get caught up. You want to talk about geographic equity? Well, let's start right here. Build single-family residences, give people a yard where they can have their pets and kids safe. And let's get some government help then. Why do we have, why do we have to draw aside the PSU box? I disagree totally. I don't want to see these high-density places where people are on top of each other. We are not white rats. We are not an experiment for the government to pack us in like this, when we have all this gorgeous land. And I hope you change the slides to reflect what's really farmland versus forestry land, because that's a very delusional thing to show people that think we have all this room to go through. We don't.
Thank you very much. Heather, do you want to, would you like to respond?
Sure, just to answer the question that if you have a single-family detached home and you decide to remove it, it's not an act of nature or whatever, and you are in the R 2.5 zoning district, that is our highest-density zoning district, you would not be able to rebuild single-family detached because the city has made the determination that those are the zones in which we want to create a higher density. And there is 70% of the city available in the future planning for single-family detached. So those aren't the areas that are designated for that.
So all the little houses down here in Cottage, and all our little houses in the county.
Exactly, the 2.5 is not part of 2.5 in no doubt. So yes, we'd be able to rebuild the ones that are done, are 7.5 and R 5.
But what if you bought a, before we go into 2.5, are you having a grandfather in there?
They are grandfathered in, yes.
All of this needs to be on the record.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Not a common. Yeah.
Well, yeah, I appreciate you pointing out.
I'll just respond to the question that if you are in a detached home in the R 2.5 zone, currently, you are considered a permitted use.
Thank you very much, Heather. It looks like we have another person to testify as an opponent to the HNA. Ray Malinowski.
Ray Malinowski, 1345 on the North Plains Springville Lane, 97239. I just want to echo what some of the speakers have said. And I really feel for the last speaker. And I really feel for the last speaker. Uh, this was a town or a single-family residential. And it was in a county of a hundred and sixty thousand people. And we're not that. We're six hundred thousand. There's a reason they don't build ranch-style homes on Manhattan Island. Because there's no room and too many people. So my concern has been that you've got to have, you know, I submitted testimony somewhat to that effect that if you've got to have six or seven hundred thousand dollars to buy a single-family residential, because our metropolitan area is, you know, pushing between two and three million people. Then you, you know, you need to have your twenty percent down, so you need to have about, you know, a hundred twenty thousand or so in cash. And then you can get a mortgage for the rest of it, as long as you have, you know, two hundred thousand dollars here in family income. And you can go ahead and afford that. I've heard a lot of people say we need more housing for our children. We do, but I'm not going to embarrass my son much by saying this, but the fact is, he can't afford a six hundred thousand dollar home either. And so if he wants to have a place, it's going to be multifamily, or he's going to sleep in his car. That's, that's where we're at. I also don't like the idea that we are continually looking at housing for non-residents. And that's going to be for you, that fifty percent of your housing will be for non-residents. Um, North Plains has made an argument saying that they're not part of the metro region. Well, in that case, you need to be paying for the people who currently work in North Plains. And the, the key is those people, a lot of them can't afford six hundred thousand dollar homes either. If you look at the homes that have been built in the last five to eight years in North Plains, it'd be interesting to see how many were over the price of five hundred thousand are actually being purchased by people who work in this community. So I, I think the city has to decide whether they're going to provide housing for the people who work in their city. And that's what I think you need to do at a minimum. You need to increase the amount of affordable housing, even if it's multifamily, in order to cover what, what that people who work here can afford. And, um, if most of the people who had moved in five hundred thousand dollar enough homes don't actually work in this community, then maybe you're not targeting what the community needs. And just wanted to throw that in there. It, it's a mathematical thing. It doesn't matter if you have a ton of single-family residential, if you have to have two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars here in family income, good mortgage. It, it, it just doesn't matter. And yes, there are some people who can afford it. But by and large, they're not the rank and file who do the hardest work. And I would just like to see North Plains re-target for the people who work in the city and don't want to drive an hour to get here because they can't afford a place to live any closer to and that's my two cents. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, is there anyone else, um, wishing to speak on the housing needs analysis? Or in number four eighty-nine? Have you seen anyone online that wishes to provide testimony?
No.
Uh, mayor, I'm not sure.
Um, Heather, um, additional comments, please?
Thank you, Mayor Lenny. I think just the additional, uh, additional comments I have, um, thank you to everybody who provided testimony. I think hearing, um, both sides of, um, the discussion about what type of housing North Plains should target moving forward, um, completely puts the spotlight on what the job was to create this housing needs analysis. And that is to balance the needs of the current community and the future community, and making sure that we are respecting what North Plains is, which is a small city that wants to be more independent, but lacks things like transit and other services that support people in higher density uh, situations in larger quantities, um, but that also, we want to provide housing for people who work here, but we want to provide also jobs, uh, to the people who work to live here. So we're planning the future and we're planning for the current residents by changing the mix a little bit to say, yes, we need to have fewer single-family detached as an overall percentage moving forward, that we still need to respect that this city, um, is primarily a small city on the urban fringe. So that balancing act is what the housing needs analysis represents. And it takes in all of those perspectives, which we have heard through the process of creating the document. Um, I think that's all I really have to say about that, unless there's questions for me.
And remind me, um, the planning commission is doing the work to consider other types of housing options in North Plains, correct?
Yes. So in twenty twenty-one, we did change the development code to expand what types of housing are permitted in each of the zones. Um, and that includes things like duplexes and triplexes and more townhomes without needing to come to the planning commission. Those are now permitted uses. Um, so they did remove a lot of barriers to building types of housing that are different than single-family detached. Um, the state does require those types of things of larger cities, but North Plains, um, by and large, does not fall into that category now. The summer of the state law did change those cities over twenty-five hundred are required to meet the duplex standards that the city has already put into place. Um, so you were ahead of the curve on that as far as allowing duplexes in the same-sized lots of single-family detached. Um, so yes, the city has been doing the work to provide more housing opportunities and to remove barriers by building different types of housing.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions from council? Comments? All right, one last call before I close the public hearing. Are there any additional comments from anyone in the room regarding ordinance number four eighty-nine? All right, hearing none. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and it's seven forty-three. This is the time now, council. If you have any additional comments or questions, any discussions, I'd like to move on.
Well, I'll make a couple of comments, then I'm going to make a motion. And my comments are related to the folks who we represent, which are the people inside this community. And we have to think about their interest and the interest of our community going forward. We have to think about a future when we have basically a mandate from the state to think about, you know, what's the look, what's the look forward in, in a twenty-year period? But I think we've been thoughtful and deliberate about that. So I, I, I feel good about where we're headed and, uh, you know, I know that there's not always, um, uh, agreement, and there can be some contention about this, but nonetheless, uh, I'm pretty resolute in, uh, moving forward and moving this, uh, particular ordinance forward. And so I would make a motion to, uh, basically, uh, move the first reading of the ordinance four eight-nine, that's city file number CPA two-three oh five six, parenthesis two, adopting the updated housing needs analysis by title only.
I'll hold on a second.
Okay, we have a first by Councilman Sheldon, second by Councilor Page. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. So ordinance number four eighty-nine is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of North Plains, Oregon, adopting an updated housing needs analysis. Now, can I have a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance four eight-nine?
I'll move to approve the first reading by title of ordinance four eight-nine.
Hold on a second. All right, we have a motion on the table by Councilor Sheldon, second by Councilor Chris, uh, Beben. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you. All right, next on our agenda is the seven B. Um, it is the introduction and first reading of ordinance four nine zero, the urban growth boundary expansion. Yes, sir. The North Plains City Council will conduct a legislative public hearing on city file CPA two-three dash zero five six, parentheses one, Northern Plains Urban Growth Boundary Amendment and Comprehensive Plan text amendment. The order of business will be as follows. The mayor will open the public hearing and ask if any of the councilors need to declare a conflict of interest. The mayor will request the staff report. The councilors may ask questions at any time during the public hearing. Any written correspondence submitted on behalf of this item has been included in the record. The staff will be invited to present oral testimony first. The public will then be invited to provide oral or written testimony on public amendment, first by proponents, then opponents, and finally by those that are neutral. Additional staff comments will then be presented. The mayor will then close the public hearing or continue the hearing to a date certain. If the mayor closes the public hearing, the mayor will call for council comments and discussion. Unless the hearing is continued, the council may reach a final decision tonight. If the hearing is continued, the council will make the final decision at the continued hearing. In either case, a notice of the final decision will be mailed to all parties to the proceeding. Everyone who testified, testifies is deemed to be authority to the proceeding and must provide their name and full mailing address. State law and city municipal code provide certain criteria that apply to the council's decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be one with the bill's criteria or the fact, or to other date or city land use standards that the person testifying believes applies, apply to the proposed land use action. Great. Thank you, Lori. Um, so again, um, before we get started, um, before I open the public hearing, I do want to remind the folks on Zoom that if you do wish to testify, either way, I need you to use the raise your hand feature. And when we get to, um, testimony, we will call on you. Otherwise, the chat feature, um, if you have questions or comments in the chat feature, that's not part of the, um, the, the public hearing. Um, and again, if you want to testify, I need you to raise your hand and we will call on you, um, shortly. At this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at seven forty-nine PM and ask the council, um, are there any conflicts of interest for this topic? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move to the staff report. Um, Andy.
Okay, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Bear with me as I hide all this gobbledygook out of the way. Okay. Uh, good evening, folks. Thanks, everyone, for being here tonight. I'm the city manager, Andy Varner. Uh, for those standing, apologies. All the chairs are used, but there still are a few more up front. If you feel like, um, going up front, I was certainly in school at one point. I would have never gone up in front, so I understand if you don't want to. Um, but there are four or five up there. Um, so we're moving on now to, um, let me hide this, uh, ordinance four ninety, we're getting to the urban growth boundary expansion uh, report in the comprehensive plan update. So, uh, in the packet attached to ordinance four ninety are the UGB report, that's also going to be referred to sometimes as a goal nineteen, or a goal fourteen report, excuse me, and also the comprehensive plan update. Because when we do an urban growth boundary expansion, or an EOA, or an HNA, you're mending the comprehensive plan. So, um, we're going to have a, uh, kind of a group effort by, uh, a few members of staff tonight to walk through, um, uh, some of the, some of the, um, issues surrounding, uh, four ninety. The areas we're going to cover are, uh, the findings and the recommendation regarding the expansion, the report, all the research and analysis done over the last few years, in that which the planning commission recommended and forwarded to you, um, just last month. Uh, present additional goal fourteen findings. Again, that's the urbanization, uh, findings. Uh, recognize, uh, some of the comment themes that we've been hearing the last couple of months, running through the planning commission and now to the city council. Uh, clarification of Senate Bill four, semiconductor urban growth boundary issue. Um, we've discussed that in previous meet, pre- previous meetings, but the city council, we haven't really addressed that topic for you, um, in this round of hearings. Um, talk a little bit about undesignated lands and reserves context, and then the schedule for the process, uh, moving forward. Heather.
So, thank you, Mayor Lenny. And it's my job to run through the process for, um, establishing the UGB area and talking through what's in the UGB report and how we got to where we are today. Um, so I will just present that. I know, again, we presented this to you before. Um, the UGB report is largely the same. We made some changes to the mapping to make some clarifications, didn't change the boundary except, um, to just be more clear about what we were talking about. So we'll go over that as well. And, um, same information is in your urban growth boundary reports as within the, um, previous land use hearings that you conducted, hearing that you conducted. Um, we have also, like, the HNA added findings that we'll discuss as well. So to begin this process, we, um, did have a, a project advisory committee that met, um, I believe eight times to talk about the UGB and how and where we should grow. Um, the dashed red line on this map is one mile buffer surrounding the current UGB for the city of North Plains. Um, but the green areas, um, and I'm sorry, they're so similar to the, um, gray. Green areas are undesignated lands, um, so did not give either urban or rural designation. The gray area is all designated rural reserves. So could not consider any of the gray parcels because they are designated to remain rural reserves into the future. Um, so we could only look at the green parcels and then the half-marked areas, which, um, is part of, uh, what we consider an exclusion area. Um, next slide. So how we determined how much of those green parcels that we need to look at? We needed to figure out what the total land need was, and we did that by looking at our economic opportunities analysis, which was adopted by the city council last November. Uh, we looked at the housing needs analysis, which you just, um, approved this evening, but we've had those numbers for quite a while now that we've been basing this information on. Um, and then we looked at capacity of the current, uh, UGB, which Tris talked about in the previous hearing, including those land use efficiency measures that were adopted in spring of twenty twenty-two. Um, and I, if we can just go back, when I do need to mention about the hashed areas that we excluded, um, that is the near acres area. There's an airstrip in the middle. Thank you for the, you know, there. Um, there are, uh, CCNR and development capacity, uh, there's homes on those lots that, uh, between the CCNRs and the development of the homes made it so that we could not count on it for future, um, expansion. If we did, it would be residential. The city does not find, uh, inappropriate to expand to the south of Highway twenty-six for residential land. So that area has been excluded in the UGB report. Okay, advance two, please. So once we determine that we need about eight hundred and fifty-five acres of land, we need to look at where that land should be. Um, we took the urban growth, uh, boundary study area and divided it into geographic sub-areas shown here by color. Um, and what we needed to do was analyze each of those areas with the metrics that the state requires us to look at, um, which are listed one through four there on your screen. We had to go through, and those are all in your report, analyze each area for how well they can efficiently, efficiently accommodate the land needs that we identified. Um, what orderly and economic conditions of public facilities and services could occur in each of these areas? How we compare environmental, energy, economic, and social consequences to development of these areas? And then compatibility with nearby agricultural and forest activities, which we'll hear more about. Uh, next slide, please. So what the, the, uh, project advisory committee and the planning commission, once they have their public hearing as well, have recommended, um, same Same as what you saw previously, we've just colored in the area, so it's a little more obvious what the U G B area looks like. So this is the first time you'll be seeing this map because we just produced that this last week. So the purple colored in areas are reflective of the U G B expansion area. The boundary has not changed, just the shading of the area. So again, we looked at the areas in the green outline, that was our study area. We didn't need to bring in the full amount of the land, that was a total of somewhere around sixteen hundred acres, we needed eight hundred and fifty five. So the purple areas are where the first, the project advisory committee and then the planning commission recommended that the city expand. So I will note on this slide that this purple area represents an adequate supply of land for twenty years for North Plains. And that is for both residential and commercial industrial growth in addition to parkland and, as we said, no school land is required. The urban growth boundary designation is not the same as an annexation or a development. So we do not anticipate all of this land to develop within the first five years, ten years. This is a twenty year land supply. What we are doing is making the planning effort now to determine how the city can grow over the next twenty years and what areas it will grow into. Which allows you to better allocate your resources for planning and determine where and how you lay out your roads and your utilities. And it gives you a certainty of how you need to do your planning moving forward. So the question has come up of, do we need to designate all of our twenty year landing at a time? We believe we do because that is the only efficient way to make sure that we're getting what the city needs to be able to grow appropriately. Throughout the next twenty year cycle. I believe, next slide, please. In addition to the urban growth boundary report, your packet contains an updated version of the comprehensive plan. We did go through and update the sections that were pertinent to the U G B expansion. In twenty twenty two, we did update what's considered goal nine economic development. Excuse me, the comprehensive plan, like most comprehensive plans in the state of Oregon, is based on the Oregon State with planning goals. And so when we make a change to any of those long range planning documents, we do need to make sure that it's in compliance with our comprehensive plan or we're updating our comprehensive plan. So goal nine, Oregon State with Penny goal nine says that you have to adequately plan for economic development lands in your city. You have to make sure that you're meeting those needs. We did that in November of twenty twenty two. Goal ten is updated in this document, that's related to housing development within a city. And then the biggest update you'll see is goal fourteen, and you'll hear that over and over again, and you've heard it from Andy. Goal fourteen is the urbanization goal, so how a city grows, how urban growth boundary areas are designated and what goes into making those designations. And I believe that is everything for that slide. Next slide, please. Oh, and now I'm handing it over to Pat to talk to you about the supplemental, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Heather. For this work.
Yeah, it works.
Just a little background, I I've been helping the city on the T U D B expansion effort. But for a little bit of background. My company is P R Management Strategies. Prior to being a planning consultant. I worked with video show through as a planning director. Up until a. A few years ago. But I do have a long background in both values. Here and in Hawaii and I said, in Washington, just a little bit of background. And as part of the effort for for Hillborough. I, as a planning director, managed the most of it. The expansion that people have seen over the last several years. So let me go back to the to the goal fourteen issues. At the planning commission level, there were written testimony and some oral testimony about whether the work done. To satisfy goal fourteen, which is the prerequisite to allow a U G B expansion. Whether that work was sufficient in terms of covering what. Use what goal fourteen requires as far as demonstrating a landing. And demonstrating that the areas that. Are chosen or both for U G B expansion meet goal fourteen location factor. So which, a lot of that discussion, we're here tonight just to sort of confirm. A lot of that discussion occurred at planning commission level. We're here tonight to just kind of confirm that we've done that work, that work has been done. The goal fourteen land needs, can we go to the next slide, please? The H and A, which is approved tonight, and the E O A, which is approved earlier. I approve by the council. Does that demonstrate the need for additional housing, hundred sixty seven acres? And in terms of the E O A. They need for the industrial land to be here. And by the way, the E O A is acknowledged by L T D S C N. The H and A will probably be after this adoption, go before the L T D S C N for acknowledgement. But the significance of acknowledgement is that. The need that's defined in there, as you see in the slide. Is not challenging. It is. So it is a need that's legitimately the city can pursue. That go, these two studies, these two reports, the H and A and the E O A addresses. The goal fourteen man need factor. Next slide. Goal fourteen also has what's called location factor. It gets a little bit complicated, but the same has happened. So I've listed there four bullets. It's all in the record for the council tonight. And these four documents that's in the record address the four factors. I just wanted to make sure that the record and all of you know that the. Goal fourteen location factor have have been addressed. And the findings are there as well in in those four listed documents. Next slide. This is just a more. Legalistic way to say. We've done the job relative to goal fourteen. And if you see in that last toward the bottom, where you can find these findings. The rules go for team requires that you consider of these factors in your balance step. You can see in the slide where in this report. All of that has happened. Next slide. So what does it mean to have a stat? How do you measure whether you've satisfied the goal? These are the two standards that L T D S C N will apply to to determine and dare be. Whether we've satisfied goal fourteen, we believe that's been done, we have the documentation for it. And so we see where that goes. That's where we are. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Bill is going to start a summary of some of the comments that we've heard to continue on.
Thank you, Andy. Okay, so. In the packet and the information you've gotten up until or before the hearing. We have had a number of comments that have come in in support. In opposition and neutral to the U G B expansion proposal. So I just want to, they're all in there, but I will just kind of run through a quick summary of what we've heard. What you've read and heard and then kind of go through some of the comments in opposition and our response. And I don't want to take up too too much time because there's just so much. As far as in favor of the U G B proposal. These four points really kind of summarize what we heard really repeatedly. And I really. You know, in support of the economic and just balancing of the city, I want to point out that. That in particular, property owners from all sides of the urban growth boundary expansion area. In particular, during the planning commission hearing. Many of them came in and gave verbal testimony, didn't just submit letters, but gave verbal testimony. This slide was actually made for review for the planning commission to hear about things, about comments and support. We'll add the planning commission points two and three here. Were very pronounced in terms of how how we heard from and who we heard from in terms of. Supporters from within the city and from outside. So I just want to underscore that particular point. You can go ahead and advance the next one, please. So I'm going to go through some comments and themes that we heard from a number of different places and and they kind of all have some similarities. So we just want to tie them together in some reason. P C hearing, it was not noticed properly, you made the May twenty twenty three P C hearing was not noticed properly in the newspaper. This whole process of going back through a planning commission hearing to rehear all of this and then a city council hearing to hear all, rehear all of this. Is remedied to that issue, so that's a that's a resolved issue as far as things are concerned. Those outside of the traditional, second comment, those outside of the traditional notice area, notice area were not noticed and informed of this process. All along the city, as far as the U G B hearings process has noticed appropriately appropriately for its ordinance. And that means that property owners within two hundred and fifty feet of an area under under consideration for comprehensive plan or zoning map amendment change. Are the ones who were required to notice. Of these types of proceedings, and we have done that every single time. We have a lot of people who have made this comment who are well outside of the study area. And, you know, distant neighbors of the city, so to speak. But the reality is that under the law, those people well outside of our study area are no different than somebody in John Day or somebody who lives in Ontario. It's not the city's legal responsibility to notice well outside of where we're required. So comments here are welcome, but going going beyond is not within the charge of the city, so we just wanted to make that clear. Next slide. Expansion area that we're considering is of the highest quality soil and there will be impacts to impacts to farming, we're not adequately addressed and farmland is going to be lost. I'll get into this issue a little bit more detail later. But for the planning commission, we went into this and like I said, I'll talk about it a bit, but. Urban reserves law and what we what is kind of thrown around is the grand bargain legislation from twenty fourteen. Very specifically considered all of this land around North Plains. And the undesignated lands around North Plains that we are looking at for expansion were not set aside and given fifty year protection as rural reserves. Which means that the process set aside land for North Plains to explicitly consider for future urbanization. When the time came and it was appropriate to do that. So we were hearing comments about farmland, but the reality is we're playing within the area that the legislature gave us to look at. For future urbanization, so it is appropriate for us to consider that area. And frankly, soil quality and all of those things were considered in the urban reserves process. And yet the city was still given this area, it's a plan for urbanization. So I just want to make that point. Number four. There, there's confusion or comment about this before, the semiconductor act with the governor's authority with the U G B and expansion. The city attorney is going to address that in a little bit, but we want to be clear about that and that soon. Next slide. Okay, the irrigation district. Walton Valley Irrigation District submitted comments into the record along the lines of easements on the west side of North Plains and the expansion area there. Are would be threatened by development and that would be a problem and that should be studied or that should be an objection to urbanization. Into the record for the planning commission hearing and therefore as part of this hearing. The record has a legal review by the city attorney and there the easements that are on the west side. Explain the west side expansion area for the irrigation district. Those easements can be respected as is or there's a there's a formal process for moving them. And so we've concluded that there's no negative impact to easements and irrigation on the west side. For our planning purposes, so there's a process to follow if things need to be moved and some may very well need to. And finally, as we heard during the H and A hearing a little while ago. There's been comment about the fact that air acres, the exclusion area south of Highway twenty six in our in our undesignated area, our study area. The residential development that surrounds the airstrip. That was excluded with 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 close coordination, frankly, with D L C D about whether that land. Adds capacity for the city and then should be brought into the U G B. And with D L C coordination, it was determined that that area provides no capacity for future future development. And therefore isn't capacity for the city and therefore it should be excluded from consideration for U G B expansion. So it is not included in this U G B expanding.
Okay. Yeah, I'll 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 go through a couple more here. Another opposition comment was the the engagement with the public has been insufficient with this process. So I want to, I want to go back in history a little bit. Eight years ago, twenty fifteen, that's when the city with a grant from from the state kicked off the North Plains Vision twenty thirty five. Process. And the reason you see twenty thirty five is because this started in twenty fifteen for a twenty year growth horizon. We're still, that was eight years ago, we're still planning for twenty years right now. But at that time, the city and the community, as you see here, had an envisioned sufficient employment land, housing. And responsible city services, businesses, infrastructure. Because that, at that time, the city knew that our buildable lands inventory was running out. So they needed to start the planning process for that, knowing that it's going to take several years to get to the point where we are now. So I just want to be clear, that started eight years ago and had its own process of doing the housing needs analysis, economic opportunities analysis. When I started this job and got to the interview in Halloween of twenty seventeen. The city was, had just adopted an H and A then. We've just done another one. We are adopting an economic opportunities analysis later that year, we just did another one. So this is a continual plant planning process to try to stay ahead of of these twenty year land supplies. And COVID and everything kind of slowed down the process, but as you see now, and Heather mentioned earlier, we're out of billable land in the city. So we do have an obligation to have that twenty year supply for employment and housing need. Also, kind of piggybacking off of that effort of the the vision North Plains twenty thirty five was. A city, the the city council passing a resolution to twenty twenty one with four economic priorities, economic development goals. And I won't, I won't read all of these, but these are really in response to community. Surveys or economic development committee, doing a community survey, surveying the business community. About what sort of economic development future we want to have for the community. And a lot of that really comes down to, you can call it a bedroom community, exurban satellite, but I think it's really a lot about. Providing more services to the community and underserviced community. It's a town of thirty five hundred people with few services, therefore forcing a lot of people onto the highway. And driving further, not just for employment, for just basic services. So the council is really focused on trying to reverse some of those trends and to do that, that was really the thrust of the economic opportunities analysis that was ultimately passed and acknowledged at the end of twenty twenty two. And then, so I just kind of covered some of these multiple H and As and E O As that have been adopted over the last few years. And then Heather talked earlier about the updated P S U twenty twenty population forecast. And our current U G B expansion efforts as a result of that. And then in the in your packet, we kind of summarized some of the different public communications efforts, doing newsletter articles, social media posts, pack meetings, public meetings, F A Qs, news articles. A project webpage on on the U G B and we've had a. Someone that's in opposition to the to the process has been very. Great, it's been great, very gracious to work with us whenever they find, you missed, you know, you missed this part in here on your webpage, please update that. So we've been doing that. We've produced a voluminous, I guess, amount of. We've produced a voluminous, uh, I guess, amount of webpages and documents over these last. Um, as you can see, eight years now. So it's, it's good that people have some understanding when we, we miss. You know, we're here and there to, to update, just to show that, um. Again, when I started at, at the city, my interview panels were full of talk of urban growth boundary and economic development. This is not a new subject. We've been talking about this month after month, year after year. So I just, uh, want, want that to be on the record too. Nearby farming interests have not been adequately notified. That was another comment in, in opposition. And again, to Bill's point. For us, nearby farming interests for those affected property owners in the study area that the, the map that we showed earlier, the ones that are adjacent. To the city that we're really considering for, uh, bringing into the urban growth battery. We've had frequent, uh, notification and contact with those folks for, for a few years now. And you can see here to date, different eighteen different properties, sixteen, sixteen of winter, uh, sixteen of which are actively farmed. Have expressed more than once written verbal support and testimony over the course of these few years, including at the planning commission last month. There've been questions. Now we move on to neutral. People just kind of asking questions. Is the city planning for infrastructure or utilities? Because that's a big question. It's a big question when you do a, an urban growth boundary expansion of this size. But as a city of our size, less than five thousand people. With its own UGB, not within the metro urban growth boundary, we're not required to conduct that sort of rigorous infrastructure and utilities plan as part of a expansion planning. We'll do that starting later this fall with the help of the state, uh, ODOT and the DLCD grant. Where we'll start the comprehensive planning of those UGB areas. And then we'll start the planning of the infrastructure and doing the finance planning. And not only that, getting back to some of the comments earlier about the housing needs analysis, that's when we can look. At some of the master planning and the concept planning of these growth areas to plan for more density, innovation, housing types that the city hasn't had before, because we have no land. The city council has been passing things. For different housing types, different diversity. So is the planning commission, but we don't have land to test that out on. So this is an opportunity to do that conference planning and the concept planning in the next growth phase. And additionally. Getting pointedly to the, uh, utilities question, we have communications from PGE. To Walton Valley Water District, as, as well as Joint Water Commission, Clean Water Services, the sewer provider, sanitation provider out here. Into the record verifying their ability and willingness to serve, uh, North Plains UGB expansion areas. In the case of PGE. They've expressed the need for acreage within the, uh, UGB area for operations in the substations. So we've had. Contact with those groups, um, over the last couple of years and involved in their planning efforts for the, for the region. And here, Chris will talk a bit about this before.
Um, thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. Uh, I've just wanted to touch base on this briefly because it's come up that, uh, somehow Senate Bill Four either. Has to be considered as part of this process or what else can't be considered by city council as part of this process. As a legal matter, it simply is a separate process entirely that exists entirely outside of our planning program. Senate Bill Four itself authorizes the governor to, uh, designate six sites around the state for, um. It can be brought inside an urban growth boundary and be made available for industrial. Uh, uses specifically, uh, semiconductor related uses. But it says in making those decisions and bringing those inside of UGB, that decision is completely outside the state's land use planning laws, the state. White language planning goals, administrative rules, local conference plans and land use regulations. And secondly, once the land's brought in, the affected local government. Asked to then go ahead and plan for it and, and public facility, plants and roads and zone for everything. And those two are completely exempted. From the state land use planning laws, statewide land use planning goals, administrative rules, implement goals, and local county land use regulation. It has the, whatever the governor does with Senate Bill Four, he's completely outside. Any land use planning program, including this decision here tonight. The other thing that's important to keep in mind is, as far as I know. That process is a black box. Nobody I talked to has any idea where the governor's going to designate these six sites. And they may not be anywhere near North Plains or in Washington County at all. So to. A cop, so it's really, it, it's just entirely speculative. There is no meaningful way to incorporate Senate Bill Four. Into your, your industrial land needs. Because nobody knows what the governor's going to do with it. It may or may not be in this area, maybe, maybe, uh, outside of Washington County entirely. And in any event, it's a decision the governor makes to completely outside the land use planning program, whereas this decision tonight has to be made consistent with the state by land use planning goals with your local conference plan and so on. So, uh, they're completely apples and oranges and it's, um. Frankly, a distraction to, uh, even bring up Senate Bill Four to power this discussion.
Hey, we're on the home stretch here. Couple more minutes.
So back to the topic I mentioned a little while ago, and that is, uh, the undesignated lands around North Plains. You know, we'll get to the map in just a moment, but. Um, House Bill, House Bill forty seventy-eight in, um. Twenty fourteen, signed by Governor Kitzhaber, basically enshrined into law, um, urban reserves, rural reserves and undesignated. Land, um, designated lands. Including in Washington County. And North Plains, of course, is in Washington County, but it's not in the Portland Metro UGB, doesn't, uh, doesn't touch it. So it, it's, it's surrounded by what's called undesigned. But in that law, uh, urban reserves were set up in Washington County, about thirteen thousand five hundred acres of urban reserves. That were set, that were designated, um, as high priority areas for urbanization, primarily adjacent to the Portland Metro UGB. Okay. And what that means is that, um, with that law, the Portland Metro UGB can kind of. Not fast track, but has kind of a clear, more expedited path to expanding urban growth boundary, uh, in. There are good battery in certain places. The other designation that primarily came out of that legislation, the grand bargain legislation in twenty fourteen are what are called rural reserves. The loss that the legislation set aside over one hundred and fifty thousand acres, over one hundred fifty-one thousand acres. Of land in Washington County. That cannot be urbanized and have to be preserved, um, for ag or just natural area. For fifty years, um, starting the clock ticking with legislation in twenty fourteen. But, um, all of that land is off limits from urbanization. So those are kind of the two primary, the, the key designations that were set up in the legislation. And those are the, and that's the acreage of Washington County alone of urban reserve versus rural reserve. Now around both of the cities of North Plains and Banks. A certain amount of land that was not designated, either urban reserves or somewhat fast track or quicker. Um, urban, urban boundary expansion process. And that, that land around North Plains and Banks, um, as undesigned is also not set aside. And protected for fifty years, um, as rural reserves, okay? Long-term protected for agriculture or, or other non-urban uses. Okay. During the process of urban reserves designations for between twenty, two thousand eight and twenty eleven. Like the region went through the process of figuring out where these lands should be and why. And the process involves cities, property owners, um, governments. Residents and stakeholders, partners, government agencies. Um, it was a gigantic effort. And North Plains during the process made it clear. From two thousand eight to twenty fourteen, it wanted the right to be able to grow some. Onto land that wouldn't be protected for fifty years from any kind of urbanization. It didn't want to be locked up. And have no ability to expand its urban growth boundary if it needed to. And the urban reserves process and ultimately the legislation that, that, that ended the whole process. Enshrine that for the city of North Plains. There are roughly one thousand six hundred acres that are undesigned immediately around the city. That the process from A to Z granted to the North Plains to be able to urbanize. Um, you can go ahead and move forward then. Um, and, and, and just to make it clear, we'll get into the map for a second, but the process looked at soil quality, the process looked at. Farming, the process looked at key sectors and farming. It listed a bunch of different things regarding agriculture. The issue of urban reserves designation and the law that was enshrined at the very end of it is that. We have, the, the region, the state directed the region to find places. To let cities grow, even though everybody knows those areas might be important agriculture areas. But the process was meant to yield a bit of area to grow relative to how much was long-term protected. For agriculture and that, the land around North Plains is that area that was set aside. For potential urbanization. Now, since that, the planning commission meeting and the hearing back in, um, in August, that kind of, where we dug into this with these slides. We received a letter jointly signed by former Washington County Board Chair Tom Ryan. And former Washington County Chair Board Andy Dyke. They were the county, now I might also mention, um, when Tom Brian was county chair from nineteen, nineteen ninety-nine to twenty-eleven. That was prior to Andy Dyke being the, what the county board chair. He was actually the representative to the county board. In the western Washington County, including North Plains. So during the urban reserves process. He was directly involved as the representative for North Plains on the county board. Uh, but Tom Brian was the chair at that time. And then after Tom Brian retired, Andy got to become county board chair. They jointly submitted this letter of support into our record. Confirming. The information that I just provided to you and I provided the planning commission in those previous slides. They led the process. In fact, Chair, former Chair Tom Brian was on the, the, the committee of four members. That ran the reserves planning process from two thousand eight to two thousand eleven. And it was him that spoke with, uh, North Plains leadership and spoke and was directly involved with everybody involved in the process. And what they both state in the letter that's in the record. North Plains and Banks did not want to be surrounded by nothing but fifty-year-long protected land. And so land was set up, the land that we're looking at for, for urban growth boundary expansion. Was directly set aside and not given long-term protection from urbanization. Despite soil quality and other things. By the process and by the legislation. So that letter has been entered into the record and that's. Their point of view on, uh, uh, and recollection, um, on a bunch of different points that we've talked about here. So on the next, the next, this, this is kind of previews of the map. So here's the map of, of, of the, the results from the grand bargain legislation, okay? And, um, the area, I think we're the, actually, I think I have a pointer here. So I'm pointing in North Plains right here. As was shown in a map earlier, the study area that we considered for the urban growth boundary expansion, that it's white on the map. That's land that the grand bargain legislation of twenty fourteen set aside for North Plains. As undesigned so that it could legally consider future urbanization in those areas. Okay. Banks is in the same situation. They have a buffer of undesigned land around it. And they are just beginning the process of considering urban growth boundary expansion very early in the process, is my understanding. All of this other land is green colored, okay? That is rural reserves. That's where urbanization cannot happen. For almost fifty years now, but in twenty fourteen, that was, that was a fifty-year time period given. So all of this where farming is occurring, where there is forestry going on, all of that is rural reserves. But this right here is where North Plains legally gets to work. And, and urbanize and plan its future. And that's the area that is in the UGB expansion proposal before you all this evening. Um, this is just a quote from some of the narrative from Metro, and we just want to be clear that when the grand bargain happened. It was basically a compromise of a bunch of parties in some rooms over the course of a weekend, quite literally. Um, a few cities, Metro, and then some opponents to the urbanize, the reserves plan, um, up until twenty eleven. They were all in the room, so opponents and proponents of map at the time. And opponents, including thousand friends, were in the room and they all agreed to the compromise map. That ultimately became the grand bargain legislative map you just saw. So we're living in a world and we're planning in an area where both proponents and opponents. Of prior reserves planning compromised on where growth could happen, including around North Plains. And that's what we're planning with now. And that's the law of the state of Oregon now. So anyway, just bullet points, and I don't, I don't need to go through all of it, but. North Plains was given six, under sixteen hundred acres of undesigned lands around it. That's available to be able to plan as undesigned lands for future organization. That was made possible by the grand bargain. And everything else beyond that is rural reserves. That can't be touched for organization. So North Plains is working with the small, relatively small amount around it. For organization planning. And that's, that's basically just what undergirds the UGB expansion area and, and process. Um, that we've gone through and, and, and what you're hearing tonight.
Okay, so, uh, as you can see here, we believe staff leaves, the proposed expansion complies with the goals, administrative rules and city code requirements. Undergirded by an economic opportunities analysis and an H and A, uh, approved earlier in the findings in the staff report. So the planning commission and the staff both recommend the city council approve ordinance four ninety. And the next steps after this, uh, would be, we would work with the Washington County, uh, their board of commissioners and their planning commission to set up, um. Future hearings, uh, beginning hopefully later in September to do some work sessions with them. And then it goes on to DLCD for, um, state acknowledgement. Okay, that concludes the presentation from staff.
Thank you very much. Um, I know I don't want to digest and take in, but I'm sure that many of us in the ring have. Seen, heard and, um, lived through some of, uh, the events discussed in, um, the staff report. So, um, at this time, we're going to, um, invite the public up. First, we will hear from the proponents and I will call you, um, two at a time so that you can prepare yourself. To be next in line and forgive me if I, um, uh, mispronounce your, your name. The first one up for the proponent would be, is it Robert Neehaus?
Hi, welcome.
My name is Bob Neehaus, uh, and my address is on the card that I submitted when I walked in. I was born here, raised here, and I've been a commercial real estate broker for forty-two years, all right here in the metro area. I represent a company called Civic Coast Fruit Company. I'm a real estate broker. Civic Coast is operated by a family of third-generation farmers. They own and they occupy about a hundred and fifty thousand square feet for food processing and distribution. In the central east side of downtown Portland. They need twice that core area, plus excess land for growth. We've been looking for twenty-acre industrial sites throughout the metro area for three years. We can't find a large site that fits for agricultural heritage or the roots. That's flat, that's clean and has immediate access to a major freeway. All like you could find in North Plains. Flipside, Ron White, Tina Kotek and Maria Pope. Commissioned the semiconductor subcommittee. To identify twenty-five acres or more that are available now for development in the metro area. They found three properties ready for immediate industrial development, totaling eighty-six acres. We need more developed land. It's obvious. It's good for North Plains, it's good for Metro, it's good for Oregon. I congratulate the city of North Plains for the thoughtful process. To create a commodity that is much needed. and can offer food and agriculture users an opportunity to build and grow within our community in addition to the tax sector. I'm excited for the future of North Plains. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Don Weber and then Deborah Van Riden Davis. I don't see Don. Okay, so after, after Deborah Van Riden Davis, uh, Scott Van Riden.
My name is Deborah Van Riden Davis. I was a proponent of the D L C D. I've already stated why, and I'm just really grateful for the thoughtful consideration and all the work you put into it. I'm tired. I'm sure you're tired and no ready to go home.
I have Scott Van Riden. I live in Banks. My address is on the card. Um, I appreciate all that you guys have done. Eight years is a long time to wait for a thing like this. As I stated, uh, last month, I just appreciate being able to get to a grocery store in a reasonable period of time without having to drive hither and non. It, it's a simple thing. It seems like you ought to be able to do it. Uh, it's just takes me thirty minutes and all the gas and all of the time. And my kids are doing that. They all live in Hillsborough. They're back and forth at my house and it would be really nice to have that. One simple thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next would be Eric Lawson and Charlie Oakwell.
Good evening, council members. My name is Eric Lawson, three-two-four-one-zero Northwest Moscow Street. I am the current chair of the Economic Development Committee. I was the Economic Development Committee Representative for the Project Advisory Committee for the U G B Expansion Conference. I've represented the E D C at multiple public hearings and written and read off, uh, pretty similar testimonies throughout each, so I'll keep it pretty concise for the sake of brevity. Essentially, the E D C and myself have taken up the issue with the U G B expansion process since the PAC conception and many years prior to. Uh, we as a committee recommend the council approve ordinance four ninety as, as presented this evening for the following reasons. Uh, we as a committee feel the U G B expansion would help ensure the reversal of the bedroom community trend in North Plains. It would drive economic development and balance through the work being completed concurrently with urbanization. And it would provide sufficient land for industrial growth that would divert traffic to Highway twenty-six, Sturgis exit, and hopefully divert traffic going through the center of town. Uh, we commend the city staff, consultants, and council members for your time. I know it's been quite a long journey, uh, but the community thanks you for your dedication. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Charlie Oakwell. I'm a previous CEO and current board chair of Hewitt Cameron Companies. I live down the road on Hillcrest. I'm here to as a proponent of the U G B and also as a member of the Project Advisory Committee. I think more than anything, I'd like to mirror Eric's comments, particularly to the crowd and opposition in regard to the process that's taking, taking place, plus the discussion that we had dealing both with the H H A as well as the urban growth boundary. There were significant conversations that went on in regard to the densities that we were looking at. How you balance that with the need of the community, which I heard tonight, wanting to have single-family homes primarily for uh, the culture of the, of the city and to maintain that. And we compliment, uh, everybody's patience in regard to that. Uh, I didn't see, and we didn't see necessarily a great deal of public comment while we're having that process, which I think was about two and a half to three years of, uh, continuous, uh, conversations going back and forth. And, uh, although I appreciate people's comments now and so forth, um, I really feel as though the research has been done thoroughly, in my estimation of both running a business as well as being a member of the community. Again, I commend the councils and the staff for actually taking the time to be careful in their steps and, and, uh, particularly in public awareness. I'm not sure how you do it anymore. Um, are there newspapers? But the long and short is, and I provide a testament of me doing the planning commission as well, uh, Hewitt Cameron, we've operated in North Plains, want to continue to operate in North Plains. Uh, we apologize for many trucks that go down our, 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 uh, primary commercial street on a daily basis, but we're also glad to bring economic activity. And quite frankly, we would like a community where our employees would feel that they could not only call their business home, but their home as well. And I feel as though we're on the right track. I commend you for looking forward to try to figure out how you grow well. And we should underline grow well and the comprehensive planning that will follow this, I think will do exactly the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. I'm Andy Van Riden and Kimmel Ferris.
I'm Murray Van Riden. My address is on the card. Uh, I'm currently a contractor. It's moved to North Plains in nineteen fifty-six. And, uh, for the rest of my family, we've loved this city ever since. Um, I'm a proponent of the U G B expansion and all of this effort for these many years, and we believe it's been, um, extremely well conducted. And I believe that it is necessary for the survival of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Kimmel Ferris, my address is on the card. I want to speak in favor tonight of this process with just some philosophical comments and I make those with some experience. Uh, I'm a practicing attorney now, but I have degrees in landscape architecture and regional planning, served on the Washington County Planning Commission as its chair a long time ago, back in nineteen eighty-eight or when we went through a very similar difficult process of acknowledging L C, uh, Washington County's comprehensive plan with L C D Z. There was a lot of opposition. There was a lot of testimony, but the planning process was comprehensive. And I had not really intended to say anything tonight, but as I listened to the staff report and the careful steps and stages that you've gone through here in North Plains, I just want to extend a compliment to you. I think you've done an excellent job, a careful job. Of course, there'll be opposition. The process of change is difficult, but the great philosopher Heraklitus indicated that the only thing that's constant is change itself. We have to change. We have to plan for growth. It's hard, it's difficult. It's careful, needs to be careful and comprehensive. I think that's what you've been doing. So good luck as you go forward and undoubtedly it'll get tested, but I think the care and the spend is worth it. Thank you.
All right. Uh, next, Rudy Cadlob and Joanne Van Der Zee.
I'm Julie. I'm Rudy.
Use the mic, Rudy.
Then a mayor, um, council members, uh, Rudy Cadlob. Uh, address on file. Uh, you've heard from me before, I've been around here for the last twenty-seven years, working with, uh, the city and, uh, the last urban growth boundary expansion that resulted in, um, uh, Grand Hill and, you know, the Sunset Ridge. Uh, here we are, some twenty-seven years later. Uh, I have been involved in the housing industry for over forty years as the master planner and, and home builder in Oregon, Idaho, and Washington. And I share that only, um, to give credence to my commendation to your staff, uh, your consultants, uh, to the planning commission and this it was all for the due diligence that they have put forth over the last several years. They've, furthermore, they've included D O C D, ODOT, County and Department of State, all who they consulted during this U G B expansion process. The result of this engagement of all of these folks is the recommendation of the planning condition, commission that we have for you tonight. I represent a, here in North Plains, a multi-generational North Plains landlord and farming family. And they and I are proponents of this recommendation of four ninety and urge that you adopt it tonight.
Joanne Van Der Zee.
I think Joanne Van Der Zee. These five one five north left track and school road is not my mailing address, but that's the property I own on the east. By the one second, it's probably going to be brought in. And I am a total person and I'd like to retire. Good job. Thanks. So very good.
Thank you. I'm just gonna call it Don Weber. Any other, um, folks in the audience, um, who would you speak as a proponent? Okay. We'll move on now to the opponents and I'll call you up to the five. Dean Moberg and Dave Van Ash.
Good evening. Uh, I'm Dave Van Ash and, uh, you've got my address. You know, a letter that you all have from me, basically here just to let you know who I am. Our farm is over on Melanie Road, part of it. But we farm a couple thousand acres. We're a large family farm in the area. And everything I've heard here today, today was, it's all positive about the city of North Plains. But I haven't heard anything about the negatives that are gonna take place here on the agricultural community. It's like you just totally ignored it. Um, I was on the Urban Rural Reserve, uh, coordinating committee, the planning of the Urban Rural Reserves. I was one of the plaintiffs that filed the lawsuit that was, uh, the Oregon Court of Appeal. We won. We did have this settlement in downtown Hillsborough. And as I recall, for the best of my knowledge, and that was two thousand fourteen, um, I'm, it was, uh, this land was undesigned here in Banks because you weren't part of Metro. And yes, you wanted to expand, but the farming community wanted to keep this land as agriculture, including all the rest of the urban rural reserves. So I have a large conflict with the two letters you got from Andy Dyke and Tom Brian. That's their opinion. You're hearing briefly what mine is. And they totally differ from each other. Um, as I said, we have a family farm. We've been around for a hundred and twenty-seven years. We have a succession plan and we intend to be around another hundred and twenty-seven years or more. And what you're doing here is going to directly affect my farm and all the other farms in Northwest Washington, Oregon. Uh, as you'll see in my letter, all the ag infrastructure for this county and the surrounding counties, the North Yank Hill, uh, Tillamook, Flatsup, Columbia, Soves Island area, Monomahs, and Southwest Washington are all depending on the tractor dealerships, the, uh, machine shops, the seed cleaners, um, all the other ag infrastructure. Those places are too small, too small to support their own. So they all come here to, to take care of that. But Kendall, you should know that. You worked in the seed cleaning business. Anyway, I feel personally, and I've been involved in land use, used to work for the city of Hillsborough as a civil engineer and retired from that in nineteen eighty and started farming. Um, we're being, uh, our farm personally is being squeezed by Hillsborough, Cornelius, Horstbro, and now this town. And where are we supposed to go? You're talking about expanding. All these farmers over here want to expand too. There isn't any more land to expand. So, um, St. Paul, Oregon, I'll give you one example. They downsized their U G B about ten or fifteen years ago because they didn't want to expand. So I'm sure you have that choice. And um, I watched the city of Cornelius when I was a teenager go from six hundred to twelve or fifteen thousand, whatever it is now. And I've testified at a lot of their hearings on expansion. And they, they sound just like yours. We gotta expand or we're gonna die. Um, uh, we need more industrial land. We need more residential land. So then we go through this five-year, or in this case, twenty-year cycle, and then just repeat it though. We need more land again. There isn't any more land. Thank you.
My name is Dean Moberg. Um, I live in incorporated Washington County. And, uh, my address is on the file. Uh, I've been involved in agriculture for almost fifty years, west coast and the Midwest, even the state of New York. For over twenty-five years, I've been involved in the book in Washington. Uh, I have a PhD, my dissertation was in elevation for a hundred and fifty in the sort of left turn Oregon, and I'm a co-author of the book, So the Oregon, which is available in Washington County public library. I mean, there's something you guys. You, you do, from previous testimony and from the U G B expansion report that gets figured five and six, that the proposed expansion is bound to mainly prime farming soils. So we did that and make sure that it's part of all very sober stuff all day. Also in the U G B expansion report, it's aged sixteen, twenty-two, talk about the impact, the agricultural impact of the proposed expansion. And that provides, I think, a decent, a lot of overview of agriculture, but there's a lot of details, like you're going to have to just talking about. I'm going to add a couple more. One is, as, as the city expands as proposed, especially with um, industrial, commercial expansion, the roads, rural roads are going to get more and more congested. And farmers like Dave, finding old, large, low, wide, even dangerous equipment on the road. They're going to have a hard time getting anyone to another. Maybe more importantly, something that the report doesn't address is that all of the farms around here have subservient drains. You probably think of it, have heard of it, as tire drain. And those drains often go from one farm to another. It's kind of a school uh, communally maintained system of drains that allow farmers to, to, to farm their land. And I know from personal experience that if you disrupt one of those drains, you're not just affecting that farm, but you're also having a great to affect the ability of the farmer uphill and the farmer down farm. That was not included in the, in the report. In a previous meeting, I remember it was a city council meeting or planning commission meeting, I heard one of the people say that their hands are tied. And, um, I would hope they said, your hands are not tied. The decision of whether to agree with this proposed expansion is in your hands, which is where it should be in a democracy. Not in the hands of your staff, very capable staff, or in the hands of consultants, or in the hands of the people behind you. It's in your hands and your hands are not tied. If you really think that this proposed expansion balances your desire to keep that small town, North Plains field, with your legitimate, uh, desire to grow in a reasonable manner, with with your legitimate um desire to grow in a reasonable manner with the legitimate desire of farmers like you and ask to continue farming and producing food in favor of the world, then obviously you should vote in favor. If you don't, obviously you should vote against. If you're not sure, I would submit, hopefully, as a elected volunteer official myself, that you can abstain from voting. I do that sometimes in my role on the twelfth and final consultation before. I hope that uh, for you vote that we give your thoughts on this and why you think that this is a reasonable expansion or why you don't. Before you vote, if you have your your thoughts after hearing our thoughts in this fashion and the proponents and others. Thank you again for the ability to testify and I mean sincerely thank you for your voluntary service to the city of North Plains.
Next up, we have uh, Melanie McAdams and David Santoro.
Mayor, let me answer the councilors. I'm Melanie McAdams. My address is on the record. I'm testifying as a private person in opposition to the U G B expansion. First, the process was flawed. The city's first vote was invalid because of failure to provide evidence. In renoticing these these meetings, the city repeatedly and incorrectly stated that the U G B decision was already adopted. And people could only comment on the amendments. The city also incorrectly stated that this expansion is required by order law, when that is false. Cities are required to review their twenty year lands apply. They are not required to expand their U G Bs. And the extent and location of that expansion is subject to public comment. Just tonight, a presenter said with finality and without supporting evidence, that goal fourteen factors were addressed, implying that it's not worth arguing otherwise. But that is not a statement of fact. It is a question for public comment. City residents rejected expansion by ballot measure every time at once. Now the city is proposing the largest expansion in history, but it failed to provide meaningful notice. Meaning many stakeholders, except those who stand to gain tens of millions of dollars from the sale of their land, do not know this process or to assume it's inevitable. Second, the city has not demonstrated the need for this much land. The P S U population study was flawed and that it assumed that the very recent and unusual annexation that doubled the city's population was status quo. Despite the city's location outside of Metro. The E O A was also flawed and that it claimed a need for commercial and industrial land based on target industries that were speculative and also inside Metro. Regardless of these flawed studies, the city, according to Luba, is not required to amend its U G B to provide appropriate land to accommodate every new industrial land marketing technique enjoying success in other major urban real estate markets. Just because land is undesigned does not mean the city has a right to take it without a demonstrated need. That need has not been proven. Regardless of S B four's relevance to this U G B expansion, the city's E O A relies heavily on that girl's semiconductor task force report. Which claims not identify enough industrial parcels inside U G Bs for semiconductor fabs. But there is no statewide inventory of industrial links and after the report came out, cities identified one ten thousand acres of industrial land inside their U G Bs. Moreover, none of the sixteen applications for chip for state funding are requesting land inside or outside of U G B. Because there's oversupply and a lack of demand for industrial land. Semiconductor fabs do not need any land in North Plains, especially to the west where there is no infrastructure for this water and energy demanding industry. In short, the twenty twenty two E O As assumptions were wrong and it should be revised. The city claims that high tech will save it from the budgetary hole that the density residential development got it into. But Holesboro foregoes almost a hundred million in school district funding a year in tax breaks to the industry of North Plains wants to attract. When laboring cities waiving taxes and sacrificing public services to attract in town, why would tech businesses move to a city that wants to use them to raise tax revenue? More importantly, the desire to increase tax revenue is not a need factor under goal fourteen. If the city wishes to address its taxpayers, it could raise its property taxes, which admits are that one of the lowest in the county. And I would also like to add my H and A testimony to the record under the lack of need um for housing land and the ability to accommodate those lands within the U G B. For these reasons more, uh, I urge you to use both known if we consider this expansion. Thank you.
Dear Mayor, Mayor Plains City Councilors, for the record, my name is David Santoro. I reside on Harriet Road in Roy. I am a cooperative generation farmer. I'm a family farmer located in southern Washington County. My family has seen a lot of changes in the past hundred and fifteen years. It has made lots of changes in the past hundred and fifteen years. But I oppose the order to continue the expansion for a number of reasons. Oregon's rural class soils are finite. As previously stated, there's talk of new houses and new factories, but no new farmland available for rent or purchase. My eighty nine year old dad and I have raised many crops over the years, currently raise grass hay and haysebuck. In addition to the custom farming we do, about twenty acres are contracted, but they're fifteen miles away from where we live. Each sprawl results in less farmland available and it being more competitive and expensive to be able to rent or purchase farmland or housing in the yet new agricultural zones. Our family is going through so much turmoil and devastating hardships due to the many consequences of the South Hillsborough expansions. During the process, we were talked to and caught at. Our questions were not directly answered and we were rushed off the whole time as insignificant stakeholders because we were outside of the South Hillsborough expansion by twenty feet. North Plains, we just do better than Hillsborough and take time to include more stakeholders, listening to and valuing their input versus implying it is all a done deal. Our family asked at the South Hillsborough expansion meetings, where all the traffic was going to go to and will it still be safe to move equipment on these roads? We were told that the trap would only go north. There would be no traffic impacts to the south on the two lane country roads. Construction still taking place. Our family contends with and struggles with the dangerous increased traffic. Increased wear on the roads without efficient maintenance, increased trespassing and turnaround on the private property, as well as collapsed wells during the pipeline construction and all the other things that no one brought up on the little table. Two additional close to home tech industry consequences are that the lower intel campus literally changes the weather. Get randomly snowed for several blocks from campus as an isolated leather suit to improving the tech fab of a devastating environmental footprint. Why would North Plains want tech industry on Oregon's rural class soils? The second impact is that when my family in South Hillsborough was going to buy appliances at the local Home Depot, they were asked what their address was. And we were instantly started selling the additional extended warranty because the standard warranty was not covered of the voltage spikes that kill the modern appliances. The spikes are intel related and they are six hundred to seven hundred times more likely within this address area of South Hillsborough. Oregon's rural class soils are finite. Once you tear off the light supporting topsoil and send it to the landfill, you do not get it back. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is um, David Pungus. And I wanna know what all.
Well, my name is David. We, our family uh poses, we are really doing a boundary and um, I'd like to tell you our story. Our family had a farm in Deuton and my dad farmed there for fifty some years. Which used to be our uh, our neighbor, eight mill before they moved to North Plains, but we farmed there until we had towns on three sides of our farm. And it got to be the point that uh it was just not equitable to try to farm because we had so many complaints about noise and dust and spraying and that kind of thing. And so I see this coming out here now. We moved out in North Plains here thirty years ago and we thought, oh, we're out of the country, but that's what's like the city coming to us again. I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Glenna Wilder and I have an address on the card. I have lived in Washington County for forty seven years and over thirty nine years farming in Mountain Dale. We raised heritage sheep and hay. I am stunned to have learned that North Plains has proposed a semiconductor factory to be built on Mountain Dale Road. I have studied maps of the proposed expansion area and ownership of the affected land. And it is clear to me that this plan will enrich the pockets of a handful of landlords. As we have seen on Brookwood Parkway, once development begins, it metastasizes and spreads like cancer. First one, then two, then four farms, then ten farms fall. The bigger it gets, the more powerful it gets and soon farmers in the adjacent areas have no voice. We've seen Hawthorne Farm Intel and then Jones Farm Intel. Are we going to see crop farm in Intel? North Plains is also not concerned about the devastating impacts wildlife. Mountain Dale has a resident herd of up to seventy five Roosevelt elk. The proposed site for a semiconductor factory is exactly, I checked this with my odometer. It's exactly one mile from the fields where these magnificent elk congregates with grins and raises their young. Industrial development will move these elk out. There's a lot of research that has found that to be true. Mountain Dale also sits in a migration path for tundra swans who rest in seasonal wetlands in Mountain Dale. Less than a half mile, those semiconductor site. Industrial development will interfere with their migration and increase mortality. And again, I have scientific evidence to back this up. I also happen to be married to a habitat habitat and wildlife biologist. North Plains is also proposing large swaths of housing development on some of the finest farmland soils in the United States. This will serve Portlanders who are looking to escape the high cost of living and violence. I went to a post office yesterday and admired the new scenic mural that is being painted on the side of the mill. How ironic it is, the mural depicts a herd of elk. The very elk that will be pushed out and they will be just a memory. Perhaps the mural should be repainted and depict microchips instead of elk. Since North Plains city government wants their town to be known as a semiconductor manufacturing center. This isn't about need. This is about greed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Gail Taylor and Barbara Anne Stallow.
Good evening. My name is Gail Taylor.
Thank you.
My name is Gail Taylor and um, my address is on the card. However, I do live in close proximity to um the proposed industrial part of the west branch of North Plains. And um, first of all, a comment very interesting about the tile. Um, we disrupted a tile in our pasture, which is above this whole area last year and um, or the year before and the whole property area below that dislanded was just one tile or one small segment of tile. So I can't quite imagine what might happen when we start dealing with that issue to everyone. So um, but anyway, um, progress, yes, there is progress. And um, I think that um uh, there needs to be some reconsideration. North Plains is a veteran community and first of all, I don't really understand what the problem is with that. People, um, some people do live and work in North Plains, but other people do commute by distance and come back home to a peaceful environment that they have chosen to live in and to love. Doesn't mean they always necessarily have to work where they live. And it seems nonsensical to think that creating a manufacturing plant or semiconductor factory or um, any industry will help the employment of the people of North Plains. It seems to me that most people who work there, because it's a lot of people, will come to North Plains from outside of our community and will drive to work home again without a second thought about North Plains. Um, the traffic alone is already becoming a nightmare on twenty six. Hard to imagine more traffic coming on twenty six. So I would assume that all of this industrial area has um, though the consideration of all the infrastructure and I can't even imagine given it's gonna look like someone said, like Jones Farm, Brookwood or whatever, because it takes a lot of infrastructure to handle. Many shifts, you know, I think they run all night. So there's four shifts a day of traffic. Um, the interesting thing about that is I live in a place where I can see the twenty six traffic. And um, this last weekend, because of the Memorial holiday, the traffic was back at going to the beach. Clear up to Cornelius Pass, I heard. And this was like ten mile an hour to the beach. So it's interesting to me to think that if people are coming to go to work and getting off Adirson Road and you can't get there, then what are they gonna do? They're gonna take an alternate route and instead of, like one person said, a direct sub-traffic onto twenty six. It seems to me that if people can't travel on twenty six for one reason or another, and they need to get to work on time, they're gonna come through North Plains, West Union and down Commercial Street to get to this little area that's that's blocked from any other direction. So it's going to make people traveling through North Plains more apparent and not less um, unless there's a lot of infrastructure changes to accommodate industry. I don't know. I mean, there is also in my mind, it seems that there is like a lot of industrial area that can be um, acquired at a place, although some people have said not. So I don't really understand that. It seems to be a lot of industrial area that is waiting to be purchased or used in the um, Hillsborough area. And uh it seems to me also that um North Plains uh, is North Plains and just try and make it something that it's not what, you know, why can't it be the veteran community? Why can't it be the farming community? Just let it ease into uh, what it really wants to be, that I think that what it wants to be. And um, yes.
Thank you.
And Mayor and staff, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Barbara Stallow and I live on Old Pumpkin Ridge Road in South of Mountain Dale. We have lived and been born and raised in this area for several many years. Um, I hate to see, I dreadfully hate to see farmland go to um, industrial and homes. I can't stand what's happening on North Avenue. That just is terrible. I don't mind infrastructure within city limits. That's responsible and called for. But when you start taking farmland to make housing just because somebody says we need more housing and that housing is not anywhere near where people work. I wish the people who travel the highway lived where they work rather than living who knows where, because every time you travel Blackwell Road to try to get to Horse Row and vice versa again, you you can't even hardly get on the road. That and to see farmland being developed into something that is not creating that can hurt our elk and wildlife, that can hurt all of us is not called for. It needs to be reconsidered. It needs to be continuing as it is in ways that actually help us to continue living as we live. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Max of Ben and Ryan Lord.
Yes, it's me. It's me and, my name is Ryan Miller and I live on Derry Creek Road in North Plains. That's along the park that I pulled up, so you've got that for politics there. When I purchased the land in North Plains over three years ago, I was really heavily influenced by the current groundry and the fact that the land that I purchased was in the exclusion area. I was really shocked when I learned about the current plan and how far along everything was in June. And I learned that through my fellow citizens Facebook posts. I was really shocked to see how far along it was and mainly because I didn't receive any outreach from the city of North Plains itself. The outreach that was done was the bare minimum and I learned that there are many landowners who were supposed to be notified and they were not. You guys already mentioned that and that's why we are currently here to re-cure it now. And I'm actually thankful for that because that gives me actually a chance to talk about this because otherwise I wouldn't and I missed the first one. But this poor communication effort is a recurring theme that's been throughout this process and it's one of the reasons why many of the citizens of North Plains are uninformed. As I dug further, I realized that many of the citizens of North Plains do not want to expand in this manner. I learned that in the past they voted against this expansion and then that issue was brought to a vote. Now, we are not going to vote. It has to be done through a council meeting. So I'm relying on all of you to make this choice for me because I cannot vote. My hands are tied. In my opinion, this is aggressive, aggressive expansion and by aggressive, I mean that there is low-density housing that's gonna sprawl unnecessarily. It's gonna put a exorbitant amount of industrial land that we do not need. And it's my opinion that the information that we're going on is biased. In my opinion, this is becoming more about money and not about the land. I know that there are a lot of people on this board that are involved in real estate or no going in real estate and they might also be a landowner in this area. It makes no sense to me why we're not looking on the other side of Highway twenty-six or looking at the one side that we are and just really points in a bad direction that I don't like. I know that many of you are pretty good people and I really hope that you can make the right choice for the people of North Plains. In conclusion, I ask the city to reconsider this decision and take that to the table and reduce the amount of land that you guys are trying to take and to use the amount of land that we have currently appropriately. I work for a semiconductor plantation plant and they are very bad to the environment. They use a lot of energy and it's something I don't want to see in North Plains. I'd like to see North Plains continue to be a small town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jackie Dyke Jones and Katie Nolan.
Good evening, Jackie Dyke Jones. Addresses have been submitted. Thank you, Mayor Lenahan and council members. Thank you for everyone for your eye contact and being engaged with the testimonies tonight. I've engaged with many of you, whether it's at a restaurant, as an owner, at recycling, et cetera, or Jewett Cameron. And I I need you to feel our passion that this is serious, right? So I'm a fourth generation farmer, steward of the land, race on Mountaindale Road and farm literally one field over from the west side area. This is not a toy and it's not Legos. So I am telling you now that the land I farm will never be for sale. No matter how much the money you could try me, I'm strongly opposed to the UGB proposal as is and I urge your reconsideration to work on a proposal that has a truly socially and environmentally conscious focus that will not destroy the local agriculture, economy and infrastructures. So I think it's interesting that I was actually planning on talking about the 2035 vision because I strongly believe that doubling in size and destroying the hundreds of acres of roamed by soils won't get the city any closer. So as far as community, I knew about this in 2020 at the very end when this proposal was starting. And when I talked with mayor and other committee members in the city, it was not even a conversation. It was like, this is what we're working on. What's the point of being engaged? And that's pretty much where it keeps feeling like. So the last planning commission meeting was terrible. No wonder you haven't had as much engagement here in North Plains. And then when the economic development committee chair testified about, then all the traffic could be on Mountaindale Road. So we haven't been able to hear any of the concept mapping yet, North Plains getting this brand yet. So all these things are happening, but this committee chair is saying, oh yeah, but all along I've been asking for the agriculture economic study and compatibility to be shared so that you're actually voting on what North Plains is giving up for the housing and industry and commercial, quote, PSU tax revenue needs. Connectivity, someone just mentioned grocery store a bit ago, so that's going in the North Plains UGB. So viewpoint, that's common. So that's not a reason for the UGB. And then on the website, heritage and natural resources, this kills me. Agriculture heritage is visible and accessible in places like Lakeview Farms. City policies preserve natural assets like the creek and tributaries. But really, if we pay over at all, there is going to be none. Again, the vision statement of public services, I see online over and over, what is not being done? And every time I listen to a meeting, public services is not being funded, they're understaffed and they need help. I would love to see North Plains show us what the survey shows, the online one, what you love about North Plains. I can't wait to see those results. And I also can't wait to hear, when I'm listening to a meeting, that public services is reporting that things are going great. So I get nothing to pay, nothing, I get paid nothing to participate in these conversations. I have nothing personally gained financially or otherwise. And I still don't feel that this is a two-way street. Please stop alluding that this is a done deal. It's abuse of power, it's misleading and it's corruption. Use the time to do the right thing. I've asked over and over, if you have not been to the DLCBD map viewer to actually see the soils, then just abstain or vote no or postpone. This land is finite. Of course, many landowners are willing to sell for millions of dollars and they're in support. Shame on North Plains for even asking such an aggressive proposal. So if their land were actually for sale and you would drive by and see a sign, other farmers would buy it. There is no farmland for sale or lease. But guess what? There are farmers who would like to grow their agribusinesses and there are young and beginning farmers who want to start one. Twenty-eight percent of the producers in Oregon are new and beginning. That means that's ten years or less. There are eighteen thousand acres in the metro UGB that's needing infrastructure money. North Plains doesn't need any of that.
Sorry, sorry. Sorry.
Okay, then my book, copy back in my inbox. How do you process?
Thank you.
I'll catch, I'll catch that next time. I'll catch that next time, folks. Sorry about that.
Hi again, my name is Katie Miller. I have a North Plains rural address that is on the card that I submitted. I take Adirson Road except regularly to get home. It's, and I'm kind of appalled that the city wants to pay over. It's such a beautiful piece of farmland. There's a glider field there and I really hate to see that it's turning to industrial business complex. I think the UGB expansion plan has an excessive amount of industrial land that we don't need. And I don't think the city can quite handle the infrastructure support to double the size of the city. There is nothing wrong with being a veteran community. One thing that has changed since you started this process is how the pandemic has changed industrial offices. I am a one hundred percent remote worker. I work from home. Many offices in downtown Portland remain empty. It's a ghost town. They're trying to get workers back into the office. So when downtown Portland and other cities cannot fill commercial offices, why do we need this much industrial space? I'd also like to talk about the city's communication issues. In my written testimony, I documented documented four specific instances in which the city miscommunicated with the and the public at large in July and August. To summarize, the city repeatedly claimed testimony could only be given on the amendments for this meeting and the previous planning committee meeting, but not on the UGB as a whole. It was claimed that the UGB expansion was, quote, already adopted. This erroneous information was sent directly to me via email, but also posted by the city on Facebook, the city's news webpage and in the August Waterville, which was nailed out to all citizens of North Plains city limits who need a Waterville. Here is the exact language from the answer that was included. Oh, I included a photo in my written testimony that I submitted last week. So these two additional hearings will, quote, provide a physical context to the already adopted UGB expansion report. This will not be a UGB approved period, end quote. That language feels misleading. The citizens of North Plains never got a clear, correct, clear or correct information in July, August and probably never understood that they had another opportunity to voice their concerns. In the past, residents have voted down almost every opportunity to expand the city's UGB when annexation was done by a vote of all citizens. As we know, some of our growth will need happen. But in the town, we don't want to become the next Canis Four on our Hillsborough. We want to maintain the small-town charm and values that several of you counselors wrote about in your bios on the city website. So who are the many people, some of the many people, a good chunk of the many people, exploring the UGB expansion? Developers for sure, small business owners, real estate agent. Basically, people who are going to make a lot of money off of this. And of course, the city will also get increased access to it. And so backline deals between elected officials and landowners have also been in place. These landowners stand to make millions of dollars from their sale of land. They no longer have to work. And none of this sits right with me. Why is our town selling us out? Where is the moral code? As you are able to vote, so can the voters vote in the next election. We really want officials who listen to the voice of the people, not what, not the voice of developers. Included in my written testimony, I did, I went through the Facebook pages. I know some people don't use Facebook. You know, I'm, I work in design and communication and I have to manage Facebook pages and my brain works that way. So I went through City of North Plains and North Plains Community. There's hundreds and hundreds of comments of, we don't want to be the next Canis Four. Keep our town small. Please don't do this. Why won't the city listen to us? So please consider the voices of the people who are here tonight, the people who think that it's a waste of time to come here and testify. Anyway, counselors, please don't be afraid to stand up and question towers of D. This expansion can be done differently with significantly less industrial area. I am particularly protective of the Adirson Road exit. It is just amazing and beautiful. I prefer that that map be left out of the equation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Pat Walter and Larry Dyke.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Karen and I reside at ninety-five fifty-five Northwest three hundred and sixteen Place Hillsborough. I'm testifying in opposition to the proposed thirty-four acre expansion south of Highway twenty-six, currently zoned exception lands identified in the report as sub-area B. My family and I have lived there since nineteen eighty-seven. And while some of my neighbors might consider me a newcomer, I am not a newcomer to citizen involvement. I served for fifteen years as Secretary of CPOA and have been involved in previous city and county UGB expansion processes. Had I been notified in the city's plan amendments in a timely manner, I would not be sitting at this table. Goal fourteen states that exception lands should be given first consideration for expansion. It does not require that said lands be brought into the boundary, contrary to what I was told at the previous hearing in July. According to a phone conversation I had with Kevin Young at DLCB two weeks ago, his role as a staff member was to provide guidance regarding long-term urbanization, but not to direct a decision. In other words, your hands were not tied to the inclusion of the exception lands. You have the power to decide otherwise. Having said that, if the thirty-eight acres where I live were included in order to minimize the acreage taken from EFU lands in the areas surrounding the current UGB, I would be more understanding. However, the city's study cited many factors that make sub-area B unsuitable for inclusion. Among them, high-value farmland currently in production, parcelization that limits development, significant costs to providing services and road improvements and most obviously, lack of connectivity to the urban area created by Highway twenty-six. Yet, despite these constraints and others, the study group and you have concluded that the city needs these thirty-eight acres, none of which add to the livability of the city. That a small fraction of the area that faces Glanco Road is hardly a persuasive argument. Had the aspirations of the city been driven by logic and reason, the expansion into sub-area B would not have been considered. All one must do is to look at the map to understand that it makes no sense to jump Highway twenty-six for the marginal tax benefits that this hamstrung area could provide. That was the conclusion in previous plan amendments and it is still valid today. I urge you to reconsider expansion into sub-area B. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Larry Dyke. I'm a farmer, live on Mountaindale Road. And at the last meeting that I attended of the council, one of the topics that came up was voter annexation. Voter annexation and President, Mayor Lenahan made the comment that the voter annexation was taken away by the state. And this is true, except for the fact that, where did it come from? It came from a farmer who lives north here who did it and apparently several other developers or consultants that went to Salem and the law, the law was passed to take away the voter annexation. But it did not start with Salem doing it. It came from North Plains. And I don't know, any of you were on the city council at that time, where was the city council involved either in support or against it? Does anyone know? Were you one at that time?
This body opposed that major.
Did they?
Fifteen forty-three.
Fifteen seventy-seven.
Seventy-three.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, so now I, I, you said we can't do anything. Well, you can still do a poll. Can't you still take a vote of the citizens? I mean, tonight, President Sheldon, you said, like the last meeting, you guys you guys don't count. You don't live in our city. Well, do you see anybody here tonight that lives in the city?
Not many.
Not many, exactly. So how are you going to contact them? How are you going to find out what your citizens want? Ask your staff? I don't think that's a good idea. You have to come up with some other approach. Can you send out a survey? Can you take a vote? Put it on the ballot? You, it doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be binding, but you could put out something and see, find out what the people of North Plains want. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Dale Pike. And Aaron Nichols. Can I say your last county councilor?
I'm Dale. Is this okay? Be back. I'm Dale Beek, Forest Grove. I have exact address and a card. Uh, Mayor Lenahan and Councilman President Sheldon and Councilors. I admire you. I admire you. You look at people, you listen, and you try to see what's going on in their heads and also resolve that with your head. So I'm impressed with what's going on here in the way of pro and con. I prefer you have pro and con, pro and con like permanent procedure recommends. But it's okay to have all pros, I guess, and all opposition. Uh, it's not very recommended, but that's the way you're doing it today. But I really do appreciate you, your attention and how you're doing it. I am from Forest Grove. I've been a Washington County resident since nineteen sixty-six. I'm a former teacher in the entirety in two thousand. And I've been involved in county public comment. Been involved as sustainability Chair of Forest Grove. So I'm really concerned about the environment, uh, air, water, and land, okay? And those are very important for not only you, but your kids and your grandkids. And I made public comment before the Environmental Quality Commission, which I'm going to do again shortly. I just made public comment for the county commissioner today. I'm going to share some of that with you. And I do want you, I was going to say, please give me a three second warning, right? So, so, so I don't get that, right? But so, and, and it is over to my right, so, you know. So just give me a little warning personally.
Okay.
Elbows.
There, that's fine.
I did convince the mayor of Forest Grove to use the county uh system of people trap times. And so they actually incorporated that in their city. So I appreciate them. I'm basically going to see it. I sent a, a very short uh email to uh Mayor. Mayor, and it said, at a public forum in Hillsborough, Senator Janine Solomon said it has been determined that plenty of lands within the urban growth boundary, the semiconductor expansion, and that more land is not needed to be brought in. And she was the big person. I mean that literally, but she had a lot of the power in Salem and getting the Senate going for her task. And she's the one that said, we do not need any more land in the semiconductors. There's plenty already. And she is in the power structure to know that. But please listen to Senator Solomon's words. I did. And I did that because it was a public forum, consumed through Song, uh, Representative, uh, McLean, and, and so said, did a public forum. And I asked, I was the first person to ask a question after they gave their comments, right? And so I asked two questions. One, uh, what do you know about the Montana Civil Suit, the youth civil suit on climate change? One of them knew about it, the others did not. So they asked me to do a follow-up email and let them be informed about those two, that suit. The second thing had to do with uh, Intel's application for increasing their pollution. It's toxic air pollution. And they submitted to D E Q. And in that, I said, are you aware that the toxic air emissions that Intel currently is allowed to put in the airship? They said, no. Are you aware of what they're proposing to put in the airship? They said, no. So I informed them this way. I said, uh, Intel's asking to increase the grass greenhouse, oh, fifty-two sentences, from eight hundred nineteen thousand tons to one million seven hundred tons uh per year, which means it equals to about three, three tons per minute that there will be allowed to put in the airship for greenhouse gas. And then also, I don't have time to go through all the D E Q. What I did for the county commissions today, I gave them this from D E Q that lists all of the P M uh, they currently can put forty-one tons of small uh particulate matter in the air, and they want sixty-seven tons. They can put currently thirty-nine tons of sulfur dioxide. They want thirty-nine tons. Nitrogen oxide, a hundred ninety-seven. They want four hundred and two tons per year. We are talking about major toxic problems. And if you have semiconductor industries coming in, you've got problems. And so I would encourage you to, that.
Game information is there? Uh, game hearing, not very good. Um, my name is Aaron Nichols. I farm just over on Jackson Ford Road. Jackson Ford Road, one zero eight five zero, uh, Northwest Jackson Ford Road. Um, I guess that makes me a distant neighbor of North Plains, but I can, I can see North Plains from both where I work and where I live, as an export farm. Um, so I don't feel like it is a neighbor. I feel like I'm someone who is very much affected by what happens here in North Plains. Not on here. Um, so, uh, I'm wondering if you can just pause the passage of this expansion and allow for a warning, but effective praise, like we need people in the city from experts. Um, attempt to, attempt to gain in the process and give the discussion really important layup in city changes uh, and this is treating different demands. Um, my previous testimony detailed the danger of farmland and farming communities, the lack of consideration of many statewide planning goals, the lack of expert testimony, and a clear lack of engagement of citizens inside and outside North Plains communities around this process. Um, it seems to be that a political decision was made to grow the town, not on the merits of growth, but to enact it before North Plains becomes a part of that growth or before Hill Road gets the land first. I fear that the termination of Cedar Plan enacted led to an end-seeking rather than an end-in-keeping approach. Plans are written and executed, not on their own merit, but as we support this kind of predetermined outcome. And where's, I think this approach, I think, a disengaged process, uh, that lacks uh, interest in public input. I kind of fear the expert testimony that they cast out on overly ambitious and under the uptake when you expand it. I still think that like the final failed, make it through the regulatory and political hurdles, have it give the black substantive and legal evidence, and in particular, the failure around the public process. Um, some of the tests might make convincing me immediately, or even show the pain of through. I don't think the city has the infrastructure ability to expand, um, and a lot of the adoption of commercial lands, and certainly no one's shown the grant for a hundred acres in North Plains for non-agricultural operating industries. Um, but the legality and technical issues aren't coming issues before you think. Didn't mention it before. And you're not expected to parse the laws with any of the here and now. We are expected to earlier accept the constituents, make the final overall decision, protect the town. As others have mentioned, they're definitely stated in the statement, you are not required to expand the city. You are absolutely not required to expand the map. They have employment opportunity analysis. These are critical decisions, and they should be made at the time for making more informed decisions on the path to saving. What's great is great opinion of the city's staff and their concerns. Their concerns should not override the concerns of the affected citizens, and that certainly shouldn't replace them with backfinding and public engagement, things that create U G B, U G B thoughts. Um, and while, again, like in North Plains ten years ago, they didn't have all the ready answers then in their two days in the hotel room. And they didn't have, uh, the knowledge we have now about the disastrous loss of farmland in the last ten years. That, uh, they didn't anticipate the many threats every legislative season to rural reserve lands that we have. Um, they didn't know about the accelerating data with climate change ten years ago that we know now. Um. I don't, I don't think that, you know, the Andy Dyke of ten years ago should, should make the decision for North Plains now. I think, I think that's a chance for you guys to make the decision. I think I'm trying to get. Um, should this decision go through tonight? It won't be carried by the facts, expert opinion or fair process. It'll be confirming a decision made for inter, inter-intercity political reasons before the process even started. They'll shut out citizens of the city and those nearby who have their concerns and could help make a better process, a better plan. Um, ask you to consider whether the facts have been fully collected and clearly presented to you. What do you feel like the city was to face with those, in that phase, it's like the public process looks like? Is it engaging people who don't farm in it, the positive, that every job of people are, aren't following the data on stage? Um, it is unlikely that any of us will ever again take part in the process, those politically actively changing. This is the process we want to settle the example. This is a process we can defend not only here in constituents today, but to our children and our grandchildren, and the result of our list falls in these. I think not. I know we can do better. And I ask you to engage, so you can hold any better, uh, and a better plan. If you're going to do nine bucks, you can get a lot.
Thank you. Next, I'm Ellen Fong. And Ken Hayes. Can I pronounce any more there, please? Pretty close.
Hi, my name is Mon Jose. My contract information has been submitted. Uh, my concerns today are for our sense of place and our future home. I live outside the city limits. North Plains has been my town for thirty years. It's where I see the vet and the auto mechanic. I stop at the bank and I grab good food from local, from the purveyors. It's my, it's important to me that my town maintains its sensitivity, its charm, respect, and friendliness, values that the city would extend to residents and rural neighbors, farmers and other businesses, business people, as well as wildlife, habitat, soils, and climate change issues, all critical to our survival. North Plains is fortunate to have important wildlife habitat. Have inventories been conducted on protection plans adopted? Likewise, prime farmland has its highest investment. Uh, soils in the farmland expansion area has been evaluated for an array of possible farming uses and considered for protection. Farming is a business. As our population grows, where will farmland, where will farmers grow? There's no more class prime farmland as we destroy it. A, a small footnote to the discussion of Washington County. Washington County's twenty fourteen U G B proposal. Um, actually, a proposal was earlier than that, but in twenty fourteen, uh, January, I believe, the court of appeals threw it back to the county, remanded, because as the court said, they had used pseudo-factors in determining the soils for, uh, rural reserve. Those pseudo-factors involve irrigation. It wasn't about the soils map. So the soils maps do need to be looked at. Um, and in that process, the process became a political one because of the economic impact. It, it didn't, it, it, the end result wasn't based on, on soils, except for the lands that were part of the lawsuit. Anyway, has local planning addressed climate change? Vital input. Yet this proposal would destroy farmland and drastically reduce carbon sequestration, while stranding development would significantly increase carbon emission. Two strikes against it. How would you mitigate that? I'm concerned that the U G B expansion seems room for unneeded low-tax industries and inappropriately high-cost housing, both sprawling across farmland with a byproduct of disrespect, insensitivity for the land, the environment, the hardworking neighbors in and around them. Equally worrisome, my town seems at risk of destroying its neighborly relationships with the surrounding beauty and our future prosperity. But growth doesn't require becoming larger. The same call is, is one example of that. Growth can also come from slow and sensitive learning, learning, analyzing, exploring, getting taller, inspiring creativity. It's worth it to make careful decisions for future centuries, century, not just decade. Please protect farmland and the need for farmers to grow their businesses. And protect my friendly small town. Thank you.
Ken Hayes. And I have a ax that's in. And Don Rother. Is there anyone else in the room that would, um, like to speak either for, be a proponent, opponent, or result?
I'd just like to hear Brad Taylor.
Um, please, please, forward.
Yes.
And I make sure that you go out of cards before you leave.
Yes, well, yeah.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't have a whole lot to say, other than I was a real up to thirty-five years. I'm in Rose State when I was nineteen. From driving from Forest Grove High School. And I've seen property values go up and I've seen them go down. Need the economy cycle and cycle. I've seen areas that have been drastically affected by things people thought would be beneficial to them. You come in here and you put a big industrial plant in like that, and you think, oh, boy, we're going to have industry and all this growth. You know what? There can be a lot of people that want to live out here. Because that's not what they're after. And so you can have property values actually going down. The name of the town could be synonymous with pollution and all of this other, you know, chaos that's going to ensue from it. And that's why it needs to be considered sincerely. And, you know, look at, make sure all alternatives are looked at, because it's not like locked up that, oh, man, we're going to grow, our property values are going to grow, and taxes are going to grow. It could have a adverse effect. You need to consider that. I know that I wouldn't personally live here or move into this town if I were looking for property, if I didn't already live here and I saw that proposed or going in. Why would I want to live next to that smokestack? You know, so just something I didn't hear anybody talk about, but, you know, it's not all growth, it's good growth. Thank you.
Hey, Madam Mayor, uh, City Council. Um, my name is Sam Diaz, Executive Director for One Thousand Friends of Oregon. Um, in this job, I, a lot of people who may seem different than me in places that are different than where I live. But there's a lot of common elements, a lot of common ground that I find in this job. And it's visions like this that I hear tonight that truly unite Oregonians. It sounds like I want to live in a place where I can safely walk my kids to school and we'll walk it, we'll run into their teacher on the way because they can afford to live in the same neighborhood. Whereas I work in a strong diversified economy, where businesses care about us. They don't threaten us. They don't hold us hostage. They support us through and through. We're dedicating a lot of oxygen about the acres and the location of these acres. But a strong urban growth boundary expansion process encourages us all to talk about the outcome. The key focus is on those outcomes, one on housing and one on drugs. Do we need to expand our U G B to meet our current and future housing needs with this action? If we do need to expand, do we have the right suite of policies to meet the identified needs? Without enforceable affordability measures included, the city runs the risk of meeting its goal and housing obligations. And potentially has affirmatively furthering their housing goals. Do we need to expand our urban growth boundary to create a diversified economy of the future? Well, first, we need to identify the types of jobs and lifestyles of the people who will take those jobs. It seems like tech is a basket. People are putting a lot of eggs in, so I'll spend a little time. The current Chips and Science Act proposals across the state, from Corvallis to Hillborough to Deverton to the Rogue Valley, From Corvallis to Hillborough to Deverton to the Rogue Valley maximize existing tech, tech campuses. The Lega Cities, Oregon Business Council and Oregon Economic Development Association conducted the survey earlier this spring. Finding that there are approximately ten thousand acres inside existing urban growth boundaries, zone industrial. Any tech in North Plains will most likely look like a distribution center and a data center. With large parking lots, idling trucks and a few jobs for local residents. Once the city demonstrates that there are other high quality jobs to be created that supports the need to expand, we must ask. Does the industrial land have a safeguarding place to avoid an all too common trap? Think of the airport, think of Jansen Beach, or an example much closer to here, the intersection of Brookwood and Huffman. Also known as the Topgolf intersection. You see Topgolf, you see a strip mall with Verizon and Subway, that was all industrial land. The city didn't have a safeguard and industrial tank trade zoning. To really make sure that high quality jobs for the industrial sector were coming. My mom is a social worker, my dad was a law enforcement for over twenty years. I have great respect for everything you do for public service. My dad and his siblings worked in the orchards in the fields. And they instilled in me the importance of listening to the community and respecting the people who put feet on our plates. So I thank everyone for coming here today, I thank you all. There's a disturbing pattern for the budgets of our local governments, they're strained. And in here, when we, we receive news of the kicker being five point six billion. And local governments are strained to provide critical services, it seems like we need measures five and fifty reform. I've heard the importance of that reform from nearly every local elected official that we visited throughout the state. I hope we can work together on ways we can support local government. Expanding our urban growth boundaries while tempting, especially without safeguards for the residents or the city budget. Is not going to solve the budget problem. Going to add more to the expense column, not one. Exactly, I approach this proposal, I oppose the proposal at this time, thank you.
Um, can you tell the person who you know, you're playing to sweep? And so, and so. And I feel like it's very long. Can you tell us, is there someone online, I don't know. If you're online, we're starting to talk about the rules. And so you can run your ready stand feature. Okay, anyone else in the room? I'm gonna turn this back over to staff for any. Final comments, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Chris Brandon, the city attorney, there's just three things I wanted to touch on briefly. I heard several people say the city is not required to expand the UGB. Strictly speaking. Goal nine expressly requires the city to, to quote, provide for at least an adequate supply of sites of suitable sizes, types, locations and service levels for a variety of industrial and commercial uses. Within the twenty year planning period, so where there is a need shown in the record for additional lands for a variety of industrial and commercial uses, the city has a legal obligation to provide that land. Goal fourteen provides the same thing for housing, so. You don't get to just decide to expand a UGB or not expand a UGB or contract a UGB because you want to or because you don't want to, there are laws that have to be followed. Goal nine is the one for industrial, commercial lands that are addressed in the EOA, which does show, which is now an acknowledged. Part of your comprehensive plan, it is no longer subject to review. And it shows a need for additional land and now the housing needs analysis, it shows a need for additional land and the state planning laws do require you to address that and provide the necessary lands. It may be that. St. Paul at some point shrank its UGB presumably because it had a housing needs analysis or a. Economic opportunities analysis that showed they had excess land and could therefore contract it. But it has to be based on evidence in the record and the adopted policies in your comprehensive plan, you don't get to just make it up. With respect to the EOA, I heard a number of people challenge various conclusions in that economic opportunities analysis, again, that was adopted last November. Those might have been useful arguments to hear back in November, that is now a final document and is no longer subject to review and intact. The city is required to rely on the adopted documents that are part of your comprehensive plan, so you simply can't ignore. The conclusions in the economic opportunities analysis. And then the last thing I wanted to touch on was that I heard it. From a couple of people that. There have been ten thousand acres around the state that identified as available for industrial uses, but if you read the semiconductor task force report that is the. Was the impetus, the catalyst for Senate Bill Four. It set out list of criteria for sites that are more. Useful or more idea, that, that you're gonna look for to cite. Fab plant or the constellation of industries that surround a fab plant and these include things like. Proximity to a trained workforce. Not Medford and Redmond may have available industrial lands because they have a trained workforce. Access to international transportation facilities. This area is close to Portland International Airport, close to the port of Portland and close to multiple freeway interchanges, so you can get in your, your product. In and out more quickly, housing available to Olivia's housing and so on, so not all acres, industrial acres are. The same, are created equal. There are things that make certain industrial sites more attractive, more useful than others. And that semiconductor task force. Looked at the availability of industrial land around the state and concluded that there wasn't enough, the right kind of industrial land in the right places. So the fact that there might be ten thousand acres available around the state is probably something the governor's looking at right now, but it's not a relevant consideration for this UGB that's reaching. What else? Wait, Mike, Chris, Ben, and Amy.
Yeah. We got some, some specific comments tonight about. Opposition to expanding the UGB south of the freeway and to, I believe, sub area five B. And thank you for the comments. It wasn't. It, it wasn't an easy first choice process to look south of the freeway because that land is south of the freeway. It has its challenges and its issues and the freeway long ago in a previous UGB expansion was a reason why expansion didn't occur south. But under, but case law since, rules that have been changed since. The land south of the freeway is exception lands under Oregon land use law. And as exception lands, it is absolutely first place, the city has to look for UGB expansion before it looks at farmland. And the, the sub area five B, the one that was referenced, we couldn't eliminate it under state criteria from UGB expansion. We could air acres, it hasn't, it has. There are covenants in place with the properties and the airstrip. The air acres residential development likely won't redevelop, it's not considered future twenty year capacity for growth for the city. So air acres residential area could be excluded. But the area that was brought up in comment tonight unfortunately couldn't be. Now, having said that, even though an urban growth boundary might expand south of the freeway to include that area. That doesn't force the property owner to annex. And develop. Property owners don't have to annex into the city, they don't, even though they're in the UGB. They have that choice, this land just draws the outer boundary of where property owners have the choice to annex. Okay. So I, I, I wanna sympathize in part with, you know, looking south of the freeway, it's not an easy thing. But we couldn't eliminate land south of the freeway. Some of it, and so areas that were included, we heard opposition to tonight. Unfortunately, we couldn't, we couldn't. Exclude that area.
And your comments from. Staff.
I, I just, one point, we have no planned semiconductor fab plant in the expansion areas, that's not anywhere in any report that we've produced, so I just wanna make that clear and on the record.
And, go ahead. I mean, I think the point that I, I would just remind from the presentation, I heard a lot about infrastructure and the cost of that and where things will happen and. So just a reminder that that's the next phase of the process, right now, we just, we determine the line based on the need, based on some assumptions being made about how much land. Housing and employment land will take and then we go into that next concept planning phase funded by the state. Where then we look at that and update all of our plans, our transportation plan, our water plan. And determine those types of things, so I agree with everyone who said we don't have the plans for the in, uh, infrastructure, you know, we don't know where the roads are gonna go. And where exactly employment land and houses are going to be because that's not this phase, so just a reminder of that.
Anyone else? And staff one. Um, when, uh, City Council, um. Any questions for staff?
Wait, wait. My, my own?
You get it.
Uh, with all the comments. Eight hundred acres, I know it's a big chunk, could it have been, could it be made smaller? Do we have to do eight hundred acres at once? Do a hundred or a hundred? I'm just asking a question. I know I went through all the processes. There's a lot of. Comments on you tonight, I'm asking that question.
I, I, I'm gonna, I feel like I'm gonna go first, there might be more to add here, we talked about this as a team just today and. You know, there's a lot of reasons to go for the full eight hundred acre stay, which includes knowing, giving the city some certainty with their planning process over the next twenty years, so if you. Say go for a hundred acres right now, that may be your next three years, but you should be planning your next three years right now, you should be planning your next five years and ten years if you're making. Infrastructure plans and transportation system fund updates. And really giving some certainty to landowners and neighbors of how the city is going to grow. I mean, I think the first step was made with that when undesigned lands were left around the city, but now we're taking it to that next step and saying. For the next twenty years, you wanna give certainty, this is what we wanna do and we wanna invest in the planning and in the good decision making that can bring the city where it needs to go. I would love to see your city not have to invest in another EOA in the H and D in the next three to five years, I'd love to see that last ten years, but you have to put in the planning for the whole process for that to be a reality and. So it's, you know, to me, it's good, good planning to think through the next twenty years. In fact, when we started this process and we had some conversations with the pack about the forty year plan. You know, is this whole designated land, is that North Plains forty years, maybe? We, we didn't go there because that's a little beyond what the planning process is, but it's not out of the realm. At my meeting before this was the cap who's fifty year plan. You know, we need to be thinking as a community and as neighbors, where are we going, how long can we look into the future so that we can make valid decisions? And I think going for five years doesn't get you there when you're investing in infrastructure planning and how you're gonna grow.
Thank you. I'll have a word for later.
Counselor Page.
What's to stop or slow down the speed of the developments? What do you think UGB? Next step is to apply your comprehensive plans and pay a fee. What's to slow it down from having some of the farmers? On the east side. Quickly sell out or become partners. With the hazard development like the NAR or some other one. And then we have a bunch of houses being rushed into the, into the fray. And things like having a fence height isn't figured out yet. We have still a lot of G on that. What kind of, uh? Measures do we have? To actually slow that process down? Before our mall stack area is overwhelmed by, by some.
Counselor Page, think through the question, I think. The, the easiest answer to that is that. The next step of this is the comprehensive plan process and figuring out the uses of the zoning and all of the policies and infrastructure planning that we have to do. That's all the next step. And implementing all of that. Proper policies and zoning and such, that's, that's all in, in the next step. And then that has to be done before property owners can even consider annexation into the city to kind of begin the development process that you also mentioned. So we're looking at a multi-step process. And our con, our comprehensive plan process that comes next is a gigantic part of getting at what, you know, what I'm hearing or concerns about that.
So what I'm hearing is that there's a process involved. And there is no way to do it in the round of that process. Or, or operating the timeline, sorry, you had a hundred twenty days to do this and now it's too bad, so sad. No one's gonna do what they want, that, that's correct?
Counselor Page, that, that's correct, I mean, the first decision would be, first of all, the, the property owner has to decide whether they wanna annex. And if you don't wanna annex, you don't have to, but if they do wanna annex, they have to apply for the city. And the city does not have to approve that application, even if you do. The property will retain its county zoning until the city then in a separate subsequent decision. Rezones the property consistent with your comprehensive plan, so there's a sys, there are a series of steps that have to happen, many of which are within the city's control before any of the property would develop.
The ones that are out of control are a timeless.
So the ones that are out of control are, and this is under, sorry to get into the weeds here, but that's where I live. O R S two twenty seven point one seventy eight, hundred and twenty day rule applies to a decision for a permanent limited land use decision or so change, any other application, for example, an annexation. Application is not subject to the hundred and twenty table, a comprehensive plan amendment not subject to the hundred and twenty day rule. So until they come in with a develop, an actual development application. Your, the, those timelines don't align.
May I just add to that, Counselor Page, I just pulled up the annexation requirements for this video development, your development code. So to, in order to propose an annexation of property has to be in the city's urban growth boundary. Has to be contiguous to the existing city limits or separated by, by only a public right of way, stream, day, lake or other body of water. And a right of way that is not within the urban growth boundary may be annex for road reconstruction or modification, which you've seen recently. But the criteria include that the proposed site complies with the city's comprehensive plan and the designations thereon and that an adequate level of urban services is available, so. That means that nobody can apply for annexation until the concept planning process is done because that's where we'll designate comprehensive plan. Designations for those land and then you can't just decide the upper west, northwest corner is my land, so I'm coming in. There's probably not an adequate level of urban services, so it forces a logical implementation of development of land and. By nature slows, can I guarantee it'll take the whole twenty years? No. But we do have the annexation criteria, we are going to use our concept planning to designate which lands go where. Like you said, will all residential come in before employment? I don't know, but those land will be designated and if the areas for residential don't have the urban services, they'll have to wait for put in the urban services.
Thank you.
For the sake of time, I will leave mine quick, but just staff, I know in some of our previous packets, we have really drew soil quality and I know that's part of the criteria result for this finding. And just hearing from the testimony tonight, I just wanna confirm that those soil settings that were conducted for them to us. In a previous packet where the L C B approved soil. Studies. And this is an, or is it an independent study by, by?
No, uh, thank you for that question, the soils information that is in the UGB report does follow the state's process. The state doesn't have a clear process, so we asked for the process, we were given some guidelines, we followed that. And got a general, yep, that's, that works for us. The other thing we keep in mind. Um, the other thing to keep in mind is that, um, these are high quality soils. The issue here is that these were designated lands as undesigned. These are undesigned lands. Um, you know, in the grand bargain. And so that issue, I'm not saying that the soils were deeply looked at at that point. I don't know. I wasn't part of that. But those areas are the only place we can look to expand. We don't have any option to look at less valuable soils. Uh, the city can only expand onto the areas that are undesigned and they all happen to be except maybe some of the exception lands, which we have to look at, um, high quality farmland.
Counselor, that would be fine for it too. None of this land is shovel ready, as far as I know. By the time you go to the permit process, this could probably take years. And so, um, having eight hundred acres makes sense because I would assume it takes five, six years before anything gets, even contractor comes in before they even get set up and ready to go. That's my understanding.
Thanks, Counselor Smith. There's one, I want to use that as well, also where to follow up on an earlier question. And frankly Heather's response, the urban services like sewer and water, for example, are not provided by the city. They're provided by others. Uh, water condition or clean water services. And if you bring in a three-year supply of land, they're not going to invest in significant infrastructure because they, they don't know whether it's going to go any further than that. They, they're going to need to know that before they take on the expense of increasing pipe sizes, adding pump stations and so on, that there's a reasonable likelihood that there's going to be some build out over the next 10 to 20 years. Same thing with roads. In, I mean, as Heather mentioned, the infrastructure planning requires more certainty than a three to five year plan. Uh, because none of this, as you pointed out, is shovel ready. It won't be shovel ready until those infrastructure pieces are in place. And we've done a comprehensive planning. So yes, it's likely to take a number of years before you do that.
Can you confirm what, um, regional partners that we have spoken with, um, that are aware of our future aspirations and what that looks like?
Mayor, uh, yes. So on the, for sure, can you tell us side? Um, Portland General Water, primary electric provider, um, the Joint Water Commission, as managed by T U Phil Pearl, Walton Valley Water District, both of those water providers are aware and have been discussing things with us. Clean Water Services, the nearly countywide wastewater sewer service provider is aware and working with our plans. Um, Washington County, uh, State of Oregon, Department of Land Conservation Development and Business Oregon, Business Development, Industry Development Department. Um, Metro, we've had conversations with Metro about our planning relative to where their U G B is and how we can work together on transportation. Uh, O D O, uh, O D O and D L C D are the source of the $230,000 act. You have four comprehensive planning. The city of Hillsborough, uh, the West Side Economic Alliance. Our, our Senate Senator Weber's office, um, representation that we have at the state of otherwise, um, just about any partner we can reach out to and work with on this, uh, Greater Portland Inc. Um, we've, we've had conversations with and are working with on this. So we're far from alone. Um, everybody who, as, um, uh, as Chris mentioned, um, anybody who would be looking at investing significantly in North Plains in terms of its infrastructure and utilities in particular, is looking at us or going with a 20-year plan and a 20-year process here. Because they have to have assurances that the, the long-term build out is being appropriately planned. But they want to be and they committed to be part of it. And that, but that's some of the letters we actually put into the record.
Any other questions for staff during the public hearing? Well, I will go ahead and close the public hearing at 10:21. Yeah. And this time will be for comments from city council before we make our decision. And I will, um, start. Um, I heard a few things this evening that, um, made me pause. I've read testimony. I've read all the testimony. Um, and I think it's important to understand our past. Think it's important to understand where we came from in order to understand how we're gonna move forward. And I moved here 17 years ago. My husband's been here over 25. He's retired law enforcement and he took up, um, uh, becoming a realtor as a hobby. Um, the only property I own in North Plains is where my house sits on. The 7,500 square feet where my 1,700 square foot home sits on. So, uh, I wanted that to be disclosed, um, because I don't want you to feel like, because there was a comment tonight about um, people on this committee and people on other committees being, you know, realtors and landowners and all that kind of stuff. So all you in this room own a hell of a lot more land than I do. Um, many of you, not all of you, but many of you. But I think it's important to understand again where we came from and where we're going. And when I moved here, I became immediately involved in the community with the walking trail committee, uh, the vision committee. My neighbors talked me into getting on the city council. And I want to applaud a lot of our community leaders over the years and the volunteers over the years and the business owners and the staff over the years and the neighbors and, and, and the time and effort that they have put in to create this vision statement. This vision statement was created 20, it was, it was, it was created in 2015, but it was started before 2015. And the residents that came together to put this together are still in this community. Many of them are still in this community and so are the business owners in this community. And they gave up their evenings and weekends to create this so that we could have a vision for our future. So we could plan and preserve that small town charm. When I moved here 17 years ago, the population was roughly 1,900. Today it's about 35. So in 17 years, we've just about doubled our population. It was a small town, had small town charm back then. When my husband lived here 25 plus years ago, he'd come home from work in the graveyard, get on his ATV and drive up and down North Avenue when it was a dirt road. So it was charming back then. It was charming 17 years ago and it's char- still charming today. And I really feel like a lot of that comes from the volunteers who are on committees, who are on this council and who have been on councils over the years. Who, um, I mean, I'm on two boards and about three committees. You want to look at my calendar. I, I mean, I don't know why my husband's still here with me, but he's, you know, I don't know. Um, I give more of my time and my personal time for this community than any person up here on this dais. Um, I, I'm not looking for accolades. I'm not looking for, you know, kudos or pat on the back or anything like that. I'm telling you this because there are people in this community that have vision for this community, not just for next week, but 10 years from now and 20 years from now and 40 years from now. And do we need to incorporate and have all of you in the room and have this conversation about what that's going to look like? Yeah, we do. Okay. Can we do better? Yes, we every ti- everyone, everyone could do better and we can do better too. But I really believe that this group, this body and other bodies who has spent blood, sweat and tears on things like this comprehensive plan, the EOA, the HNA, the Parks Master Plan. I mean, I can go on and on and on. I'm proud of the work that those folks have done and I will stand next to them because they're my teammates. And I want them to understand and also to ensure that we take the time and, and then have that opportunity to make sure that we continue to preserve North Plains and, and have that small town charm. Like I said, it was that way 17 years ago. It's that way today. And if the values of the leaders of this community value that small town charm, it will become an environment, it will become a culture, and it will become something that will do everything that we can in our personal being to sustain that. And I feel really passionate about that. And, you know, I'm, I'll be happy to sit down with any of you anytime over coffee and, and, and to talk to you and then figure out how other ways that I can bring these to the table to have these conversations. But why aren't these people, you know, I know Counselor Sheldon, you know, is very passionate about his, his constituents as I am, as everybody else is up here in this dais. And a lot of our constituents know what we're doing. You know, they, they call me. They call us. They come to our houses. We have, we see them in chili cook off. We see them at ice cream socials. We see them at Fourth of July. We have an event just about every month where we tap into our community and we touch them and we talk to them and we hear them. So I, I'll show that unless somebody else has a mic, but I, I feel really strong and passionate about that, that we have, we are doing the right thing. I mean, I live by three principles, my house. And that's do your best, do the right thing and treat others the way you want to be treated. And if I'm not being held to those standards, I mean, call me out, but I feel like I'm doing the right thing with what I have for my community. Let someone else do it.
A lot of, uh, I was about to world media and I wouldn't have space. And, uh, you know, and you know, you have the neighbors and physically small, right? Uh, when I came here, you know, friends, that's our place. There's my mom. I have, I have a bitter dad. I have my, I have my daughter. Now it's time. Go outside and play. Just have fun. I know your neighbors. I know everybody around. It's, it's nice. Travis is nice. Um, live a lot past. It's allowed, probably the easiest to become, you know, in excellent city just by being a thief. So then I realized the city's going to grow big and fast as. So, uh, that's why I thought of any question then. And then I became city council. And I realized that, um, growing up, um, the population of the earth was, uh, three billion people. Wow, that's a lot of people. Oh yeah, but you know, a little lot of those, one billion. Wow, flip the bat. Somebody said a stat that is one people alive today that have ever lived on the planet earth. And those people have babies. What is going to happen? Um, the way we have to do it is by measured response and try to figure out how we're going to do it. None of us have the crystal ball. If we did, I'd be rich and I wouldn't be here. Half hundred, but you know, watching something or something. Um, none of us know what's going to happen. We have some ideas. We have some rational thoughts. And we try to get the rules of how things can grow. And, uh, it's going to happen. We have to figure out how the medicine applies. People need in measured way or makes more sense. Um, and there is large farms around here, great land. Unfortunately, we can't expand to the, um, maybe make a skyscraper and just have one nice little skyscraper. But that's how we're doing it now. Um, we haven't spanned into the area. We have a lot of those. And, um, in time, when we act as a mistake and we say, oh no, what are we gonna do? Then the laws will change and it'll try to adjust ourselves at that point. But right now, we are expanding. Improvising itself. These ways of living. And, uh, I, uh, I worked for this large people company at Intel. I've been working there for a very long time because when I was younger, I was a law enforcement and I realized I don't want to be around bad guys all day. I want to be around the smartest people in the world. And these guys are going to build stuff to make the human race smarter. We're going to do more things with Wes to be able to share our knowledge. You have computers that can do more processing than, you know, human minds can ever, ever do. So that's why I, I worked over there. And, um, um, this is the big, you don't have a room without Intel. However, with Intel, this is the best. People are going to be alive and maybe written on something. So, um, a lot of my employees that have, I'm a manager now, um, have struggled to find out where they're going to live. And it's a fact. There's not a lot of house. They're living in apartments, sometimes with, with like roommates. And it's tough. Nobody wants to do that. Uh, when I was younger, I had to do that and I didn't want to, but I had them, right? Um, we need more housing. We need some support to be able to, we need to illustrate. This city cannot be a better community. But on that, probably the problem, but what I'm that is there's not enough, uh, income to pay for the services. So we need that business and scale of law. So we gotta strike a balance. And that's where it's given it the right way and block that out.
Anyone else? Counselor Sheldon?
Yeah, I've got a few comments. I think about, uh, a number of things that I heard tonight. Some of my objectives, some of them I have some sympathy for. But I wrote down a few words of what I reflected on when I made my notes from some of the comments, both, both, uh, in favor and in opposition to this. And I think about the words misinformation. There's a fair amount of misinformation out there. Uh, speculation definitely at the forefront. There's a whole lot of speculation about things that aren't going on. So somebody needs to check their facts. Desired outcomes? Yeah, I think we have been very intentional. We've been very deliberate. We have been very calculated because we followed a process that's set up before us that is prescribed. I think, uh, this is congruent with the real spirit of Senate Bill 100. Going way back to 1973. But we still going to be deciding something locally. It's not entirely out of our hands. I mean, this is our community. You may be our neighbors, but you may not be my constituent. I don't know that I represent you. I represent the people. My duty is to the people of North Plains, not Washington County, not the state of Oregon, not the state of Illinois or anywhere else. It's right here in this community. And I think this expansion serves their best public interest. I think we have done a very thoughtful and balanced job of making this a reliable 20-year plan. This is not what's going to happen in three years. There's a lot, again, a lot of passion about that. But, you know, we don't have any idea what the economy's going to hold. We don't know what land values are going to do, whether they go up or down. Interest rates are pretty much, uh, a sore, a sore subject when it comes to development. Borrowing money is, is a major barrier to making improvements. But, uh, I am resolute in my belief about this expansion. And I'm not a politician. I'm a decision maker. And that's what I'm doing tonight. And I support this.
It's hard to follow some of these speeches here, but I want to be some things for this evening tonight. But I want to say thank you to each and every one of you in this room, constituents, to neighbors, to staff. Just thank you because I know with ours, the energy and path that even the difference from one and you're on one side or the other. And it's the, the role of this board tonight to take a straw line and a fan and take a stance. And it is not an easy decision. I empathize with the thought of someone's livelihood. And I also empathize with the thought of determining the destiny for future generations to come. And that being said, I think we've all expressed our, our opinion. I feel a lot of it, um, add a lot of emotion to that. But I do want to make a determinative decision. And this is something that as a body.
But I do wanna make a data-driven decision. And this is something that as a body. We have spent hours and hours and hours of fun. And I think about the beauty of democracy that. If the board, you know, the council, we tried to expand the U G P tonight, that. There is still power within that democracy. The landowners can still make the decision if they would like to sell. Or if they wanna continue on the farming legacy for many generations to come. That is the beauty of the country we live in. But I I really wanna say thank you and to everyone here coming tonight for all the meetings, all the testimonies. And I will talk them all over to the next council. Thank you. Councillor Smith?
I'm not sure what I could add, but like the. I did write some comments down. But I like the commitment of city staff. And the mayor for doing a fantastic job, putting this together from four ninety, he was playing here and. Along with the mayor, not the mayor, but the city lawyer. I think they've been early, playing and don't forget, having some tools too, what she's done. But uh, a couple of things I, I, this thing, I. But what I understand is we're calling the farmers who want to sell their land greedy farmers. And at the same time, uh, farmers want to expand. They can always buy. From these greedy farmers that they wanna expand to. Second, another comment was made, our property taxes are low. Raise them. But then another comment, the affordable housing. That you can't do both. Another thing was, we are greedy and corrupt, so back, back uh, back from deals. I don't see anybody here being a mafia or like doing corrupt deals. None of them are doing it. Big landowners or developed areas. I'm like, or, or, I'm retired. And that's what I get here in my retirement. My wife, uh, on the art finance event, okay. And I hate to tell you how her she spends on the computer. Putting things together as a long-term coordinator, finding volunteers and we get the things. Um. Yeah, hours that are completed. And as the mayor said, she, it's a full-time job. And she makes. Nothing. So, you know, you gotta commend her on that and then her contributions on that. And then working with the state government, county government. Um, it's, it's not an appreciative job that she should get appreciated for. Um, there's a lot of councils here that have families. And and put time in and being retired. I'm gonna look at my schedule before I go play sometime. Um. Pretty much, but it all.
I wanna echo uh councillor Payton's uh sentiment that she said. I just wanna thank everyone that came tonight, proponent or opponent. Um, you know, been on this uh council for many years and visiting everyone here. Um, you know, whether they're in favor or not of this expansion has really, this journey that we have a common. Love for North Plains and that's just really, it's really great to see, you know, they're reading to me. Um, and all the time that we have spent on this, it's actually been many, many years. Um, unlike others have kinda mentioned, um, so a lot of blood, sweat and tears have gone into this with staff. Council, other boards and commissioners. So I just want to echo the sentiment of thank you for everyone's hard work. Thank you for showing up today, your testimony, um.
Why, why always have to be last? Yeah, I also wanna thank everybody that came out tonight. Um, and the comments are made by people out there that I know that are working in the farming communities. For the last fifty years. And uh, I know the struggles that you're up against and uh. It's a commendable occupation to be a farmer, let me tell you. You provide the food that we eat and uh. That permitted, but uh, if you, farmers go away. Anyway, I'm uh, lived here fifty years. And it's been a nice little community. And I know growth is inevitable. It's happening all throughout the county. It isn't being stopped by. By a small group like you. I don't see anybody else stopping that. But it's nice to see you here and voice your opposition. Like you said, there's no residents here, but everybody from within the county is here. So that's great to see a lot of farming faces. I'm part, uh, I came here when the town was small in nineteen seventy three. And I'd like to say I I leave it that way. When I leave the surface, it will still be small. And I think it will be. I haven't had that many years left. But anyway, my granddaughter says, uh, if you vote for this tonight, I'm gonna have to change my last name. So what are, what, what position to be in? Uh, I know it'll get done. If I, if I might be a descending vote, it's still gonna go forward. I don't think I'm. Probably the only one that uh, I don't like the, some of the houses that you're being built in the north here. I don't like them at all. It wasn't my perception of what North Plains looked like. When I lived in Old Town, I was hoping there would be some ones. Over to that, but it's not. It's complete opposite. And they're small and they're expensive and. My, my granddaughter and the son, I can't afford them. Period. That's why you're living with me. I mean, it's terrible. I mean, you know, you gotta make a big salary like Rick. It's huge. And you can't, you can't go on like that, in my opinion. That's the political thought that I have that this, these houses can't double. You over a million dollars in the next five or ten years, it just can't be. But anyway, uh, um. You know, I had the only comment that uh, I like potato chips and you can eat those, but you can't eat potato chips. Anyway, that was my thing though a few years ago at Joe Cameron's tea company. I had a few speeches for those guys, so. And intel scares me, but as it is, if we're here, we can move. Where are you gonna go? Everybody here, there's no house for sale because you can't afford not to move. It's scary. It's. I'm not trying to paint a, a negative picture, Mayor, but uh, you know, I'd like everybody here to come to the board. I wouldn't be here if I didn't. I've been here for many years, but if you walk away, I'm not gonna do that. I could work with anybody. But I do have that thing in my heart that says, what's the right thing to do? And when I see these spaces. When people are all living within the county and there's not our, our resident here at our place tonight, uh, I wanna do the right thing. So. I am probably gonna be a descending vote, but uh, I will work with this community, this council. I will not quit. I will stay here and uh. I hope that we can build smaller houses for people. They don't need to build the big mansions anymore. We need to build smaller houses for people that are afforded. In my opinion, I hope I can get some space over that down the road when we do this planning. Will we not? Or are we gonna have to do the, the state of the big game on it?
Councillor Kendall, we have many, many, many hours of planning ahead. So don't worry about that.
Okay, I hope you're there to see that, okay?
You'll be around.
I think I've said it out. I thank everyone who is here tonight. And you put a lot of thought, effort into that. I commend everyone of you for being here tonight. Thank you so much.
What is the, what's the council?
I'm going to recommend that based on the evidence and testimony in the record. That I know we do a first reading of ordinance four ninety, uh, amending the city comprehensive plan by tile only.
No, thank you. All right, we have a motion on the table by councillor Sheldon, seconded by councillor Page. Any discussion? I just, I, I, I wanna thank staff for the many hours um of consultation. Work and everything that you've been to all of this. Um, very, very much appreciated. I know it's a late night, everyone wants to go, but. I know we have a lot more work ahead of us, but thank you very much. Also, thank you to everybody in the room. Um, no matter what side you're on, I think we need to find a way to bridge the gap and work together. And I think that we can and will do that. So again, thank you everybody for your testimony and for, for being here with us and spending your evening with us.
I'll call. Question?
We have a first and a second. There is no more discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Aye.
All right. Laurie, do you need to? We should probably break you up. Councillor Sheldon?
Aye.
Councillor Martinez?
Hi.
Councillor Schmidt?
Hi.
Councillor David?
Hi.
Councillor Page?
Aye.
Councillor Kendall? Name?
Name. I wanna get it right. Thank you.
And uh, Mayor Lannan, aye, thank you. Yeah, you bet. No problem. All right. Um, so first, we agree on the by title only. Uh, ordinance number four ninety is an ordinance in the city council of the city of North Plains, Oregon. Amending the earlier boundary and approving the associated comprehensive plan tax amendments. Now, may I have a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number four nine zero?
I move, we approve the first reading of ordinance four nine zero.
And first by councillor Sheldon, second by councillor Smith. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Aye.
All right, um, the ayes have it, very. So, uh, councillor Sheldon? Your decision?
Aye.
Councillor Martinez? Councillor Smith?
Aye.
Councillor Payton?
Aye.
Councillor Page?
Aye.
Councillor Kendall?
Aye.
Mayor Lanning, aye. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night and say jackal.
It's just, no, I have, I have nothing really to report, so. Sorry, sorry, we almost gave you a heart attack. Folks, we're gonna try to finish up our meeting tonight. So if you need to conversate, do it outside and we'll probably join you in a couple minutes. Thank you.